We need to do what we need to do to keep ourselves and our families well.
Right. Good evening, Yorktown. Welcome to the town board meeting for August 10th, 2021. If everyone can please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it should stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you could just join me in a moment of silence as we remember Pat LaFaro, a longtime town employee, recently passed from complications related to COVID-19. We also ask to keep in our thoughts and prayers Nicole Scovia-Gagin, a longtime public servant for the state of New York, Westchester County, also passing this weekend due to COVID at the age of 52. Thank you. And of course, we remember and keeping our thoughts and prayers over our frontliners and first responders, especially our police department who do a wonderful job in our voluntary ambulance courses and fire departments here in the town of Yorktown. Quickly, I just wanted to provide a quick, an update on, on COVID. Here in the town of Yorktown, our caseload is now at 96 active cases. And I just wanted to provide one piece of data. On August 10th of 2020, we had 10 cases. And that was before the rollout of the vaccines. We have instituted some new policies here in town. Those policies include, and I'm going to read them specifically, so there's no... It's three policies, and I've had some questions from the business community. This does not apply to the business community. This only applies to town facilities and town employees. All visitors to any town facility will be required to wear a mask. All unvaccinated town employees will be required to wear a mask when indoors. And all indoor, public-facing town employees, again, just town employees, regardless of vaccination status, must wear a mask when speaking to a member of the public. These three policies were put into place in conjunction and consultation with our COVID-19 medical task force. That task force, again, made up of Yorktown residents who are providers, healthcare providers, doctors, who work here in the town of Yorktown, live here in the town of Yorktown, and are helping us through our decision-making process. I think it's important for folks to know, we share, I share the data, we share the data as a town board, and we share it in a transparent manner, not to scare anybody, but we want to make sure that you have all the information to make intelligent decisions. Decisions for yourself, for your family, and for our community. I've said this, I can't tell you how many times, especially last year, when we were first going through this terrible virus. I know that there is a lot of frustration, and I, I'm with you. I get it. I really am. I am very frustrated by the fact that here we are, once again, requesting our employees and our visitors to wear masks. But at the same time, again, we're not doing it to scare people, but to protect people. Protect our employees and to protect our residents. I'm just going to reemphasize again that when we share information, and the Community Impact Dashboard is still active, still provides all the data you need right onto the town's website, including vaccination rates by zip code, the new caseloads, active caseloads, and the total that we've had since the beginning of the virus. Again, not to scare, we're not trying to scare people. We're trying to educate. We're trying to help you make decisions based on the information that we have. And we hope those decisions, again, help and protect our most vulnerable residents. We have a full agenda tonight, starting with Support a Walk. And so I'm going to ask Melissa and Kathy to the podium. And we will hear about the next event coming up for Support Connections, one of Yorktown's phenomenal not-for-profits. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. We have our Support a Walk coming up on Sunday, October 3rd. And we would actually like to ask the town if we can put up ribbons on Commerce Street, like we've done in the past. Those will go up after Labor Day, if we are allowed. And just when you're driving down Karma Street, and you see the pink and teal ribbons, think of Support Connection. And what we do is we provide free support services to women with breast and ovarian cancer, not only here in Yorktown, but nationwide. So we are so thankful for the town's support and everyone here.
We'll see you at that walk this year.
Looking forward to it, absolutely.
And hopefully, we'll be able to gather in the park, but if not, we are encouraging people to walk with us wherever they are in their communities. We have some beautiful parks here in Yorktown, so get out there.
I just wanted to add my thanks to the town for always supporting us and encouraging us to help as many people we do. And this year, we will be celebrating 25 years as an organization. And we are proud to call Yorktown home, and we couldn't do it without the continued support. And as Melissa said, we'll keep you posted. We have the date reserved in the park, Sunday, October 3rd. And we have to just keep in touch, but even if not, people will be walking in their own community as well.
That's wonderful.
And thank you, and thank you for all you do for us.
Excellent. And so when do we, when do we expect the ribbons to be up?
Right after Labor Day.
Right after Labor Day.
So the week of Labor, so September 8th, I hope to have either myself or some volunteers out there.
Great. Highway Superintendent, any problems with that?
No, I think not.
Okay, just making sure. Just making sure. Excellent.
And they'll come down by that Monday, October 4th.
Great. Thanks so much. Really appreciate it. And keep up the great work. Thank you. Oh, I don't know. You can ask. Next, we have a discussion about our sign law. We're going to invite our building inspector, John Landy, and our assistant building inspector, Joe Venetucci, as well as John Tegger, our director of planning. I know he's here as well.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, John.
How are you?
Mr. Landy, Mr. Venetucci.
Hey, Joey.
Joe's been, Joe, I know does a lot of work with Abaca and is intimately involved in those sign approvals. Joe, do you want to take the podium and give us some ide...? I know that you sent over some ideas that was shared with the town board.
I was asked if there was anything I knew in the zoning code as far as things that might need changing. And seeing that I work with the sign law so much, I said, yeah, there are a few things in the sign law. I've been here about 13 years, and certain things haven't been changed even longer than that. I'll give you a couple of them. One of them is phone numbers in the signs. When they advertise, a lot of them want to put phones, phone numbers in it. It's not really looked upon as a good idea by Abaca. They always kind of say no. And I can understand why. It's really not necessary. You're advertising, I believe, the location of the store. But unfortunately, it's not law. And I think that might be something that maybe you want to look at, that's all.
Okay.
Another thing is the, in Appendix D, I think it is. It's all the non-residential signs. There are zones that are outdated that have been replaced with different zoning districts. Different, for example, M1 might be an I1 or something. You really can't match it up. We do our best to try to match up what goes with it, but it might want to, might be something that wants to be updated. And now that you're looking at the overlay district, I says, I asked Mr. Tegger, I says, do we want to look at that maybe? Saying, okay, you might have a certain type of store that requires a bigger type of sign than what's there now, because it's a different, different use, different zone. That would be two things.
For that, would it only be, you think, would your recommendation be only for the overlay district? For those, for those specific signage, or would you, would you do townwide?
As far as what? The signs?
The signs for, that you just discussed.
Well, if you're revisiting everything, you might want to revisit, if you're revisiting the overlay district, and you're going to look at the other districts coming in, where you're going to be taking some out, you may want to look at everything. I really don't do much with the sizing of the signs. I think planning does more of that. For example, when they've done the master sign plan for Staples Plaza and Lowe's, and you all did the mall, you kind of decided what size sign should go with the business. It wasn't really up to the building department, and I think it's a wise choice. So I would gladly, you know, sit down with anybody who wants to talk about it and see, you know, put the ideas together.
Can I have a question, Joe? I have a concern about the signs that are outside on usually grass. And I'm not sure whether or not they're approved by the planning board. I just happen to think sometimes there are these, you know, for so long, we've looked at these ugly signs, whether they be hanging on a pole or whatever. Of course, to me, they're, that is, that's a problem.
And... Are we talking about the temporary signs, like sandwich signs?
Yeah.
Okay, that's, there are exemptions for temporary signs?
Not for all temporary signs, though.
No, correct. But anything that's a temporary sign, that's...
Would that be, would that be an approved sign? Do you have to get temporary signs approved?
No. They're exempt. Certain temporary signs are exempt, not all.
Like what? Give me an example.
Uh, grant, I don't really deal with that. Jason does, but I would say grand opening of stores.
I could see that. I could see that, that you do that. That's no big deal. But I'm saying that you, as you come down 35, and it crosses over to 118, and you see all of these signs...
Like the sandwich signs?
Not only sandwich signs, but it looks like signs tapped on to post.
Well, that's, those are violations.
Right.
You can't just tack something up like that. That's a clear...
Then we need to, then we need to send the...
Code enforcer, which we took care of one just the other day, right, Dave?
Yeah, that was quite a task.
Yeah, I saw that.
On Commerce Street.
Yeah.
I have a question. How about the LED sign, you know? I mean, it's, it's cheaper to get the LED signs than have it made up. Are there any rules and regulations, you know?
Most of the people now are putting LED signs up for energy efficient-wise and everything. Not neon, but LED. That's what most of the signs are now.
But are there any regulations, you know?
Not for LED.
The thing is, because there is a visual, you know, the light comes in your eye directly when you are going in. You can get blind, you know, just by looking a few minutes, you know?
Oh, that might be something...
Well, that was something I think we, that we need to look at.
If you can just go to the podium. What was that, John?
That's something I think we need to look at, especially we do have several applications coming in for lit signs. They're going to come through the board, I believe. So again, I think it's something we're going to have to add to this list of looking at for sign permits. So we can get that. As you know, we have a couple coming in through the mall.
Councilman Patel, I just, I just want to clarify. Councilman Patel, are you talking about a store sign with LED lights? Or are you talking about the signs?
Because what happens if the lights are on all night?
I'm sorry, the sign, though, that advertises, that changes, is how much you're talking?
Whether you want to call it the store sign or a temporary sign. Because if the lights are on at night, they can, you know, distract the migration of the birds, you know? I mean, you know, they have a problem like that, you know? So if everybody has an LED now instead of, and you couldn't buy very cheap, you know? So, you know, you don't want to have, otherwise, you know, the car is coming in, the light is shining in your eyes, I mean, you know, it's just a...
So you're talking about the store signs with LED instead of fluorescent?
John, have you, have, has planning, the planning council that you're a member of, looked at, at issues such as the LED signs, what's correct, what's not correct?
Well, I'm not certain exactly what Councilman Patel is referring to. But we do look at lighting, LED lighting, because they tend to be very bright if you don't pay attention to things like their color temperature and their intensity.
That's what he's talking about.
That's exactly what he's talking about. And we do, in particular, we do a lot of work with the banks so that you don't end up with a landing strip, and you end up with something that is more pleasing to the eye and is not distracting. So we are aware of that issue. So anytime that there, I don't know where, where it comes into play with signage, where there is the actual light source, the LED, that's getting into your eye. The only thing I can think of, if it's one of those signs that is advertising, but those aren't that same type of brightness. But a brightness issue is definitely something that we always are concerned with.
I'm sorry, Highway Superintendent Paganelli?
Quick question. So, piggybacking on Councilwoman Roker, anything, tag sale, garage sales, anything that's on a utility pole is illegal, correct?
On a utility pole, yes. They can put a yard sign in, like, like one of those for sale signs, or...
Right, in our right-of-way.
In a right-of, well, they can put it on their property only.
Not in our right-of-way.
Not in your right-of-way. Nothing on town property. I know that the highway, the Conic, and the Onramp, the DOT, allows for certain signs on their right-of-way, political signs, I believe that is.
Okay, so any signs that are on utility poles are legal?
Hundred percent.
And should be taken down?
Hundred percent.
Okay, thank you.
And then we also have a, we expect to see an application that I think Mr. Landy was referring to. And Mr. Tegger, you, I know, spoke with the potential applicant as it relates to the LED signs for, for EV car charging stations, which would not, is not recognized in the code. And right, Joe, we talked about this as well, that it's not recognized in the code if... The LED, it's the video...
Oh, yes.
Yeah, the video signs, the mall. Yeah, right. So if there's motion, our code doesn't recognize it, because the code hasn't been updated in quite some time. So I would also like us to include those components to make sure that if there is an individual property owner, like the mall, who wants to partner with a company that brings in free EV charging stations, but do, does so based on, it's kind of like at the gas stations, right, where they have the video screen while you're pumping your gas. I think that'd be a great asset for the town, and we should, I think we're going to obviously have to legislate that so that it's recognized by the code.
Yeah, I think, I'll defer to these two guys, but I think under the current code, that would be not allowed.
Correct. Correct.
So you have to correct that in order to let that happen. And, and that's, that's a new thing that's been happening since, since the sign was, sign ordinance was instituted.
And I, and I know that there's been different types of signs that businesses have been utilizing, whether those are, what's the right terminology, Joe? The flag signs or the...
Oh, yeah, you have, like, you see a lot of sandwich signs out there.
Okay.
They're actually prohibited. But a lot of people use them to use them for their menus or specials that day or something.
Right.
And the restaurants kind of toughed away. So, you know, something you may want to look at, depending on the location of the restaurant or the location of the store, where they don't have the greatest advertisement, it's, may want to be visited.
And what about those, those inflatable, the wacky inflatable...
About those, but the flag, we have...
Yeah, that's a problem to me.
The, the ones that fly around, and are they, are they, is that legal? They're not allowed. Okay, well, that's important to know. But, but the, but the flag signs also are not allowed, but I know a lot of businesses are relying on them. They want them.
They want them, they're, they're putting them up, and I'm trying to send code enforcement around for that.
Okay. Does the board have any thoughts on the flag signs that businesses are utilizing, especially over the gas stations?
Those like those kite signs that, that...
The ones that, yeah, it looks like a big, long banana...
I don't like them.
You see them a lot on the beaches.
They look stupid.
See them at, on the beach, when they're renting bikes and all that.
Well, that's the beach.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just...
Is there, is there a substitute for the, for a sign like that, that maybe we can...
Sandwich signs?
Yeah, but you're going to have a gas station put out a sandwich sign?
No, but I'm just saying that's, they can put flags.
All right.
Something like that, maybe on a temporary basis, maybe with a permit for 30 days or something of that nature, where you put up a flag sign for grand opening, or a special, or a sale, or whatever.
They have to pay for it.
Well, they're saying...
A deposit or something, and they'll get back.
Yeah.
You got to be very careful about that, because gas stations are always saying gas sales.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, but if you put a time, if you put a clock on it, you know, 30 days or 60 days, whatever.
Or they don't get their money back.
Well, okay, maybe like, you put a time limit on how long a period, and then how long of a period downtime, and then they may want to do it again.
Right. John, the other, I'm sorry, Councilman, go ahead. No, no, go ahead.
The critical point in an LED sign is the luminance, how bright. Because you don't want to get blind, you know, from the, you know, making turn like that, and the city didn't look at you. The light is also reflected from your glasses also, not only the eyes. And, you know, you're, depending on what you are wearing, so it's really a safety issue. I have a concern about that.
The luminance and also the color temperature is the other important factor, yes.
John, the other thing that we tackled was on one of those, up in Shruboke on Barger Street. The, the sign issue that we ran into at that gas station, is this, I think this would be a great opportunity for us to try to find a solution to that problem.
You talking about the Barger Street, the new one?
Yeah. Remember, we had an issue with the size?
The size of the sign, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So that is not in the sign code? That's in your...
That's right. That's right.
Filling station code.
That's right, okay.
Yeah, that dictates the canopy signs is in a free-standing sign.
And that special permit gives you the opportunity directly to modify...
That's right.
Those parameters.
I'm going to ask you a question. I don't think anyone wants to prohibit anyone from making money. But when a, a new store or a store decides, I don't like the sign anymore, I'm going to put up a new sign. Do they have to come to see you, John?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, they do.
Okay.
And to piggyback a little bit on the luminous signs, maybe you give them hours of operation. They have to put timers on and turn them off after a certain hour. That's something you may want to think about.
Which signs were they, John?
The lit signs, the, the signs that Councilman Patel is talking about.
But if John just said that what they look at was the, the intensity of the sign, I don't think we want to approve any sign that, that will probably blind people.
Of course.
So I would suspect that we need some dialogue in the, in a proposal with regard to, to that.
Yeah, definitely. Like John said, it would have to be a certain brightness and colors, but also hours of operation. They can put timers on these to shut them down at night.
Yeah, exactly. They have a, also the, some of these LED signs, like the ones at the high school and et cetera, they dim at night.
They dim, and like you said, they also, some of them turn off after 10:00 PM, 11:00 PM, when basically everything's closing down.
Right.
There is another issue with the LED light with a different color. You know, you have a glass window and, you know, the building like that. So it depending on what angle the light is coming in or reflecting from the car, and it reflects it, you know? Reflection and reflection are two different things. And, you know, that could create just like a smoke, you know, the smoke of light. So this kind of thing you have to see, you know? You go to the last, because in your Times Square area, you don't even know where you are when you look around, because you get feel dizzy, you know?
I guess you're from Westchester, that's why.
Yeah, no, this is true, really. You get confused, you lose the, you know, sense of direction, really. These are the safe, but it happens with the bird, migrating birds, you know? They allow you to, not to have certain kind of light at certain height, where they have a path for plying the birds and like that.
So I think we've got a good baseline for us to begin crafting an update to the law. So maybe what we can do is we can pass it over to our town attorney, and he can work with both your departments to make sure that it's encompassing all of the suggestions, recommendations that you've already made. And if there are any additional ones that you could think of along the way, I think we should try to look at it in a very comprehensive manner. John, I'm just going to ask, well, Joe, you would know too. I know you've been here for quite some time. Do you, do you remember when the last time the sign code was updated?
I don't, I haven't seen it in 13 years, I can tell you that. There may have been one or two.
It's been some time.
Changes in 13 years that I've been here.
Okay, so obviously, I think it's one of those things that we should try to modernize and update, and make sure that it reflects what people are utilizing. So if we could...
I agree.
Pass it over to our town attorney to begin drafting with your input and, and help. That'd be great.
Can I ask John a question?
Which John?
And it arises out of the, the gas station on Commerce Street.
Yeah.
What does the code say about those dumpsters? It, I am so confused.
The, the clothing bins in the back? Yeah, it's a whole different topic.
Whole different topic. Switching a little gears here.
Sorry.
Clothes, no, no, it's quite fine. Clothing bins that are there were permitted prior to my administration. And what they did was they issued the permits for them. According to the code, though, in my opinion, what I, the way I interpreted it, it should have went to planning, for site plan. And, but all they did was renew, and renew, and renew. So my opinion is, I would like my code enforcement officer to go in there. Yes, they're permitted, but let's move them out of parking spots, because as we know, that station has very minimal parking as it is. So why take it up with bins? So let's move them out of the parking spots. Same with dumpster. They're allowed to have a dumpster. It's a business. They need it.
Oh, I'm not talking about dumpsters. It's the clothing bins.
Okay, the clothing bins, I think, even though they have a permit and it was renewed, I still believe they should work with the planning department and the building department to move them out of the parking spots.
Why don't we just update the code with that as well, because I think that...
You want to ban them?
No.
No, okay. I didn't know what you were thinking, where you were going with it.
If you want my suggestion, you should have...
Because the problem is, they are turning into areas of blight. You go, you go up to Jefferson Valley, you go up to the JV Mall, you go to these other areas.
And the ones in our lot today.
The ones in our lot today, they're, people are turning, they, they think they're dumpsters. So they're literally just dumping things even if it's full.
Part of the ones in our lots, those are, are dumpsters that I remember DEC, when it was called, before it's called recycling. We benefit, obviously, from that, from people bringing stuff there. I think Phil can ask the company, can they come a little bit more, a little bit more often than what they do? Because you do see it.
Yeah. Yeah, but the, but the other problem, though, is Phil's been engaging, especially over by the bowling alley in Jefferson Valley. That has been a, that's, that's really turning into an eyesore. And it, and it happens so frequently at this point that unfortunately, it's almost on a bi-weekly basis that we're having to, we have our code enforcer going over there. I know you've been over there plenty of times, and, and Phil's having to get involved, so I'm just...
Maybe this has to become an issue for us then.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking it's an issue that we may want to address in some fashion. I don't know, you gentlemen have any thoughts on that?
I, I was thinking that we only have 10 sanctioned, uh, drop boxes. Where XYZ company will come, they will get their permits, and they will be on a schedule on when they're going to pick up...
My opinion right now, nobody's getting a renewal. We are not going to renew any new ones until they hit the planning board, go through the planning board, come back with the planning board decision, if nothing is changed within the law.
But we would have to put that in the law if that's what you want.
It's in the law.
Yeah, no, that isn't what I mean, John.
The law requires them to go to planning.
I mean...
And they don't go?
They did not.
I don't, John, did we ever find, I know you were looking for the record, but did we ever find whether or not they were referred?
I found no records that I have, that I could produce, so, and I don't recall of late in particular. You know, there's a, I think there's like 20 of them, something like that. So I, I know for sure that I did not see them all.
We need to bring that company in, that...
I may have seen the early ones, just in conversation, but I, I don't have any record of it, no email records I searched.
So I think, I think to Councilman Roker's point, and Councilman Lachman, and Diana's, I think it's something that we need to address further, because it's, it is turning into an issue. Yes, Councilman Patel?
I have a very quick question in general. You know, we have those big dumpster here in our parking lot. Some people bring the food, you know?
Right.
Like spaghetti and rice, and the animal, they break it up and it's all over, you know? I mean, so...
Well, they bring it for the cats that are out there.
No, 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 this is, they want, even canned food in like that. I think bringing in any kind of food is not a very good idea. Somebody put a whole bunch of beans, you know, the, the garden beans, I mean...
I mean, although I think it's with a good heart that people are doing that, these companies, I believe, on most of their bins say no food.
No food.
No perishable items, so...
They are opening up the animals, you know, I see, and it's there for a whole week. Sunday, these are dry spaghetti, you know, or some other kind of pasta and rice, and, you know? I mean, this is not really safe.
I, I believe this is going, should be...
And cookies are like that, you know, cookies, somebody...
Should be, it's going to be, it's an issue. So what I, I think what we should do is we should bring it back to the, our next work session. If you can come back with the areas where these, where these bins have been approved for, where we currently have permit. I think it's good for us to see where they are in town. And then we can talk about how we want to move forward with them. If we want it to only be town sanctioned bins on town property, rather than our private property, which is harder for us to obviously regulate and, and maintain. That may be an answer, because again, those pictures up in Jefferson Valley are...
Just tremendous.
They're bad, yeah.
Can we bring in the company that we used so we can understand...
Yeah, absolutely.
What their schedule...
Yeah, so we'll bring it, so yeah, I think that's a great idea. So we'll, we'll bring it back in our, in our September work session. All right?
Suggestion is also because the mall seems to have a pretty good handle. I, I see stuff there piled, and within a day, it's gone. So maybe we want to bring them in to see how they...
Sure.
Handle the scheduling and making sure. Because it seems, like I said, they seem to have a pretty good handle on it.
And John, just to clarify what I was saying, I don't say that we should bring more people in, but the ones that are here now should go. And we just have one facility, dumpster, dumpster, bin, provider... And we just have one facility, dumpster, dumpster, bin provider that, yeah, I'm listening to Alice down there, one bin provider, kind of like the way they do to the garbage contract. You have one bin provider that puts it either at town locations, et cetera, and has a schedule on when they're gonna pick up.
And I don't, I'm just spitting this out there right now, then it might have to go out the contract for that.
Right.
We can deal with that.
Yeah.
Yep, okay, very good, gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, next we're gonna bring up our town engineer, Dan Ciarcia, who's gonna discuss the INI study for Hallicks Mill Sewer District. Dan?
Good evening.
Evening, Dan.
So, you know, this is one of these things that comes around as part of the regulatory requirements under which we operate. This one in particular for Hallicks Mill. Generally speaking, we're doing these like every ten years where we we look at what kind of flows coming into the plant, we look at, we monitor at various locations in our collection network to try and figure out where the greatest flows are coming from. So, as part of that, we had actually put this out, I guess, in, in March.
Right.
And it kind of got lost in the shuffle with the transition. So, our hope is to get this out and on the street, advertise it at, I guess, probably the first meeting in September. And then we can kind of get this going. There's other ancillary issues that we need to do such as updating our equipment at our pump stations, our monitoring systems. This isn't part of a bigger pump station upgrade, but we'd be installing the telemetry so we can monitor flows at the pump stations as well. So, it just gives us additional data points to... So, that would be done by purchasing and on our staff, but the actual INI work would be done by a consultant. I guess, once we nail down the scope of services and get the consultants, that aspect probably gonna be about three, four hundred thousand dollars. And that would be paid exclusively out of the Hallicks Mill Sewer District. It's not coming at any of the districts that serve, areas that go to Peak School.
On the north side.
Separate animal with separate budget requirements, so...
Yeah, we talked about this earlier this year. And when you come back and you come back with some pictures so we can understand, I tend to think when people hear about what we're putting out without any, 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 I think maybe when we got, we were on Zoom?
Yeah.
We got to see a lot of visuals.
Yeah, yeah.
And so now we're back.
Maybe we'll be back on Zoom by September. Hate to say it, but...
I'm just saying that because you know what, all of, your plate is very heavy with both sewer districts, both Hallicks Mill and the other sewer district. And we are, there are so many things that are jumping, that are going on there. It'd be kind of nice for you to talk to us about.
Okay, I could, at the September meeting or, you know, or a work session, you know, kind of just update John.
Okay, thank you.
Everything that's going on.
Yep.
I have a question. How much was the infiltration study was done year before or like that? Because this is not just something started up.
It was in Peak School.
So, do you have any number line?
Well, we did an INI for Peak School, most recently. We did an INI study for Hallicks Mill a number of years ago.
I believe 2010 was the last time we did it.
Yeah.
So, let me just say to people of Yorktown, those who are not here and everywhere else, only thing you want to put in your sewer system is pee, poo, and toilet paper. Everything else does not belong in your sewer system. There are so many chemical oil like that, they will make themselves pet burger, you know. I mean, the iceberg, the pet burger. And it could cost a lot of money, you know. And then on top of all the stuff breaking, you know, the pipes, the order like that, goes in your sewer system and it costs a lot of money. So, processing of sewer, wastewater is more expensive than purifying the water incoming to the town. This is my suggestion, please remember what not to put, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Patel.
But on a related note, what we're doing here is less about what people flush, but what enters our pipes that doesn't belong there in the first place. So, as far as a public outreach, the thing, like one of the things we run into a lot is there's these companies who will sell you on, you got water in your basement, we'll fix it for you. And they never kind of tell the homeowners, like, where should I send the water? Oh, yeah, just connect it to your sanitary sewer. So, what we see is a big uptick in the flows. And, you know, I mean, granted, some gets into the pipes themselves, but some of it is driven by people who have these illegal sump pumps. You find people have gutters connected, there's just all these connections that shouldn't be there that are. I mean, as far as the pipes leaking, that's on us, we have to fix that. But the public outreach, you know, not that the wipes and all those other things, we want those to go away too, but, you know, the, this whole matter is about trying to reduce the flow that goes to the plant so we can reliably meet our permit and stay under our permitted discharge capacity.
Some of the new product, you know, like a disposable diapers and like that, really, it's really not very, very smart things to do, I tell you that, you know. Because in England, they had with the fat and all the stuff, it just, it was a hundred and hundreds of millions of dollars, and it's gonna cost about six months to unclog all those lines, you know. So, it's whatever you don't want to put it, you just put it in the trash and it's easy. Costs less money than dump it into the sewer. If you put the ton of very hot water and some meat, fat, something goes inside, you think that it will go away, further down it's gonna clog where it is cold, you know. And that costs money, a lot of money, a lot of money, thank you.
Dan, I'm gonna go back to what you were talking about. I don't think people understand that. It costs us a lot of money to try to locate where this, where these flows are coming from, and it works against us. How often do you use, do you guys do the, with the company that you've used every year for a hundred million years looking for leaks at night?
Cook, Fred Cook?
Yeah, Fred Cook.
Yeah, I mean, those things, sometimes you'll catch it on television inspection. But, you know, sometimes we find these things, we do the smoke testing, which kind of gets people stirred up. You know, you try and tell people they see smoke and they get even more disturbed if their house doesn't have a house trap and all of a sudden smokes entering their home. So, that's always an issue. But one of the things, you know, maybe in the future we could talk about is, you know, and this would be collaborating with the building department. Whenever there's an open building permit that they inspect the house to ensure compliance with the, you know, to look for a sump pump and see if it's compliant. Because we've found a number of these through various techniques. And it's unfortunate when you tell a homeowner, once we realize they've done that and you find out that one of these, you know, dry basement contractors, you know, just said, well, that's how you do it, you connect to the sewer. And then they're left holding the bag, having to remedy the problem that the contractor, you know, you know, what the contractor's solution was, was not a good solution or a legal solution, really.
So, if people are having those kinds of problems where they've got a wet basement, can they call the engineering department and say, what do I do? Because, you know, otherwise you're gonna call one of those contractors that's gonna tell you to do something you're not supposed to do.
That's a scary thing for us to get into.
I know, I know. I know it's scary.
The consulting side, you know, it really is the, truly, no good deed goes unpunished. That, you know, if you make a recommendation and somebody spends money and they don't have a dry basement, they'll be calling us back to complain what you told us to do didn't work. I mean, the best we could do is, you know, if they, you know, hire a contractor, make sure that contractor, or they know that the contractor's not allowed to do that. If they got a pump out, that they don't pump into the sewer, they pump, you know, onto their yard into a splash plate or something to get it away from their foundation. But, you know, I think it would be just a can of worms for us.
No, I think just what you just said, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, I mean, certainly, you know, somebody calling and, you know, asking if something's okay. And always, you know, most of the time, it's people do things that they don't realize are okay because a sewer is a sewer, isn't it? That seems to be, you know, the way everybody views it. You know, unless you're, you know, in the business, you know the difference. But, you know, most people don't and it's just someplace for water sewage, get it out of my house and make it go away.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, you know, the total cost to process wastewater that include the sewer is very, very expensive. And we have a capacity, you know, how many million gallon a day? And if there is an extra leak coming from basement or somebody hook it up directly there, you know, from the roof or like that, it costs a lot of money and we don't have that much capacity. So, you gotta build, you know, some kind of a reservoir or in a storm time, you have lots and lots of wastewater combined with the sewer, it costs a lot of money. And then we have no place to store and we can have no capacity to process the wastewater. That's another problem we have.
All right, Dan.
So, that's my story.
Thank you very much.
We'll present this to you next week and then just let me know if you want us to do a little Hallicks Mill presentation and we're happy to do that for the board.
Dan, before you do go, you know, I just want to compliment the staff at the sewer plant. I know they've been working on some issues there as we went yesterday.
The team's been working hard to remedy some issues and doing our best to keep the place in compliance.
Yeah, unbelievable effort that I saw last night and please thank them all for...
All right, I will, thank you.
From the town board.
Especially you got a new staff and then they're doing yeoman's work.
Yeah. Thanks, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
Bye-bye, Dan.
All right, next, Mr. Paganelli. Come on up, my friend.
Hello.
Let's discuss our paving program so you can get back out there.
Well, yes, so, I'm here to talk about paving, which is a surprise.
You're also here to talk about money, so we're gonna call Pat up.
Okay, so I am, yes, I am here to, and they go hand in hand. So hard to pave without money. This year, we're getting quite a bit done. As you know, you and I had discussed last year a possibility of bonding some money as money was relatively cheap.
Correct.
And, you know, we would said we'd wait and see what the fund balance was. You're not gonna come up here?
No, you're doing just fine.
You sure? You know how I get nervous when I speak, you know?
You're behind.
Especially about money.
So, that being said, you know, you've gone through your audit, you have a pretty good idea of your finances. And I have two areas I would like to pave. Interestingly enough, and I know you won't believe this, but one of them is on the north end and one of them is here in town. And the difference in linear footage of these two roads, two neighborhoods, is one is eleven thousand four hundred and thirty-seven feet and the other is eleven thousand two hundred and sixty-four feet. So, I would say they're pretty comparable. That being said, in addition to these two areas, and if you'd like me to mention them, I will. But in addition to that, I would also like to, if you could find it within your wherewithal, to come up with a million dollars. You say, if you say it quick, it doesn't seem so bad. That being said, I would like to include Turkey Mountain, okay, which is an embarrassment to the town particularly in light of the new coronavirus. And if we end up, you know, with situations where our parks are getting the kind of use they had gotten previously. And that I think would fit in. And if I can, I would like to finish Downing Park, all right? That had been partially paved three years ago, I believe. And they didn't get it done in that year because they started late. Money went back into the general fund, so I think it would be nice to finish those two projects as well.
When were the two areas that you've got slated there, when was the last time they were paved?
One of them was paved twenty-one years ago and the other was paved nineteen years ago.
Okay.
Can you finish the paving at Patriot's Park?
That is a different animal, that I'm going to do. What I'm gonna try to do is while I have, since now, we actually just had an issue come up. This is, you know, to give you an idea of how we sequence our paving so everybody knows what they should be doing. That being said, right now it was Tuesday the tenth and we were doing Granite Springs Road. We had estimated one thousand one hundred and eighty-three point five tons. It came in at one thousand one hundred and ten point nine tons, which is good. It was seventy tons under budget. Tomorrow, the plan was to go to Sagunka in spring, okay? Thursday, the plan was to go to Oakside from one thirty-two out to Strang, Mark Road to Hill. Friday was Baptist Church Road, the southern, southern most part, western most part, where it ties in from Hunter Brook to the town line. Unfortunately, and I'll be, you know, apologize, I have to leave after this, just got some information with respect to something that occurred today with the paving crew and I don't know if I will be able to continue. I have to, you know, find out for Margaret what the protocols are.
And I'm guessing, based on our conversations, that it makes sense for us to make these decisions now since you're already paving.
Correct.
And it's gonna overall cost, it's gonna cost us less.
It will cost us less, things are not going down. It's certainly, you know, oil index is a little high. I think it's, at last, the Brent crude was seventy-three and change a barrel. But, you know, our paving prices are tied to the index, so paving price can change in the course of a month. Every month the index comes out and the price for the asphalt changes.
I'm gonna go over to our comptroller. A million dollars is not a small ask. We know that it can't be part of the American Recovery Money that the feds have put out. But we do know that we had a very strong audit and we are in a very good position financially.
Yeah.
No, you're absolutely correct.
Do you feel that we can cover this?
At this point, yeah.
Yes. Any questions from the town board? What is our town board thoughts?
It's a nice time to do it.
I'm good.
Let's get it done.
This is milling and paving or just paving?
Partially milling and paving, yes. One area doesn't need to be milled as much as one other area needs to be milled.
Okay.
I'm good.
We're good, so do we need, Mr. Rodriguez, we need a resolution? Or do we, do we need a resolution for a budget transfer?
Yes, please.
So, we'll make a, we'll make a motion to transfer a million dollars out of fund balance.
To the highway paving line.
To the highway paving line.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There you go, Mr. Paganelli, go have fun.
Thank you.
Don't forget about Patriot Park.
No, Patriot Park, actually, what I discussed...
I've been asking you for that for a year.
Today was, we do have, John, we do have, come on up, don't be shy. Yeah, come all the way up here.
And we need the water too.
So much fun to stand here. I've been discussing with John that we have a grant for that. Today, I discussed with my deputy that I would like to prepare that area. So, I need some sort of a, just, you know, snapshot plan of how, why'd you want it to be? Where it starts, where it ends. So, what I figured we would do, rather than, since we don't have a paver and we're paying less money actually to have the paving company come in than we pay going buying it at Peckham, I think that if we could prepare it and while he's here in town, then he can then pave that and that would then cure that one problem there. And then we also have another one. I know the supervisor was feeling very strongly about two handicap spaces at the two oh two fields. So, that's on our immediate radar as well.
Thank you very much. I know the Parks Department in the back would appreciate that too.
Make a note that the grant is for reimbursement of material only.
Okay, so the question becomes, would that fall under the ninety-nine dollar, ninety, with TAC code, the ninety-nine twenty a ton laid in place that we're paving? I mean, would that be, or do we have to segment out what the cost of the asphalt itself is?
Yeah, I think we're gonna have to do that.
Okay, all right.
Now, are you covering that out of the money that you just got as a chance?
Yeah, that's a whole separate project.
I should be able to cover that under my normal paving money. So, it will, it may, honestly, this is such a fluid scenario, this is like the tenth time I've changed this. So, it may very well, because we track it every single day where we are in terms of our purchase orders because we have a controller that's very, you know, finicky about that stuff.
Isn't she though?
You know, she doesn't like you going over the purchase order.
Were you gonna use that S-word? Didn't you?
Didn't he? No, no, so...
Now, iron fist.
Iron-fisted. And that's why, and that's why...
That would not be an unrealistic...
But that is why we are in the position we're in, that we can go spend this type of money on helping our local roads. By the way, by any chance, do you know where they fell under your rating scores?
Yes. Come on.
I just figured I'd ask.
So, the roads on the north end. Now, bear in mind, a ten is the worst.
Yep.
When we were talking about bonding money, we were hoping to get everything six and worse done.
Right.
All right, so, the ones on the southern end are, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten roads, all right? And eight, eight, six point five, six point five, six point five, seven point five, seven point five, eight, six, and seven point two. Okay, the ones on the north end, okay, are all six and six and a half's.
Okay.
That's good.
So, they're in... So they're in the scope of what we, and everything that we've done-
We were hoping to accomplish.
Everything that we've done thus far, we've paved. Prior to receiving this money, okay, with the money that the town allocates annually, with the CHIPS money, which we were fortunate that we got back the money they clawed back last year to 20%.
Right.
We were, go, we're on target to hit 11 miles a road, which out of the 200 miles that we have, 400 lane miles, would have put, would put us on an 18.18 replacement schedule, which is amazing. This additional five and a half miles of road, not counting Turkey Mountain and the other, would put us on a 12 and a half year replacement schedule.
That's not bad.
Which is, it's gotta be top in the county, so, you know.
Well, we'll say it is.
Well, I gotta tell you what, I'd be, I would, I would challenge anyone to find someone that does less, does more-
Yeah, I agree.
Maybe Bronxville, because they have four miles of road.
They have four miles of road. But so, we, we originally had 1.15 in the budget. So now we're adding another million, plus the Greenwood Street covert.
Correct, 125.
Plus the two other culverts.
3.2 million, 3.4 million.
So that puts us over 5 million in infrastructure, infrastructure improvements for our local roads in the last 18 months.
Correct.
Not bad.
Not too bad.
Let's keep going. Let's keep going.
And we didn't need a bill from Congress to get it done.
And we didn't need, we didn't need a bill from Congress to get it done. That's good, that's good work, everyone.
Okay, we're good?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Councilman Patel, you had a question?
I have a question for the entire town board. This is the 12th year, and there is one spot, looks like a water fountain at the Patriot Garden. Is that the fake water faucets over there, or there is no connection there, what's missing there?
Where is this?
Patriot, Patriot Park, Patriot Gardens, there's no water over there, right, John?
There's never been anybody-
There is, there is a tap there, but my understanding is, the water was never, the water at that point had to be brought out of this building in the downside, that left-hand corner over there, if you're staring at the building, had to be brought out, trenched across, run behind where those, what you call it, the little sheds are, behind the sheds and hooked up to that, that was never done. Correct. That's why you have no water there.
Because the people who like to have a drinking fountain or something there, you know, and-
Well, even watering gardens, it's certainly something that should, should be on, on the horizon.
Great job, Dick. Thank you, appreciate it. All right, next, in our final work session agenda item, we're gonna invite Jim Modarano up, our Parks and Rec Superintendent. He's joined by, I believe, three quarters of the Parks and Rec Commission, I'm joking, he has several Parks and Rec Commissioners who are with us. If you'd like to come up, John?
John's hurt, he's gonna sit down.
Oh, I hope you're feeling better, John. Matt Talber, Christine Dunn. So this is a conversation in regards to the renewable energy system that we are planning at Granite Knolls. Mr. Rodriguez has been doing a great job managing that process, I believe, where's John Tegater? They're on your, were they on this week's, this week's or next week's? Next week's planning board agenda? Next week's planning board agenda, they'll be coming for the first time. The governor of New York, Governor Cuomo, did sign our Parkland Alienation Bill, just recently. And so, it may have been the last act, but in, in all seriousness, this puts us in a great position, because I think, as we've discussed with our park superintendent, and we've heard countless times from our Parks Commission Chairman, that there are significant capital improvement projects that are needed throughout the parks system, but we do have financial shortfalls that allow you to address that. The idea behind this proposal is to take the revenue, which is on an annual basis, Mr. Rodriguez, I believe, 145?
Yeah, that's roughly the number.
Roughly 140, roughly $145,000 annually for 25 years. And that, I believe, should be put towards the improvement of our parks, and put into a trust.
Turf replacement?
No.
No.
No, they have, they have other needs that they need more help with, and a more immediate help with. But that should be put into a capital improvement trust, not to go to operating expenses, but to go to the capital improvements, like we've been dealing with with our playgrounds, like we are dealing with a fence up at Granite Knolls, things of that nature. I think it makes, I think it makes sense, I think it's gonna put our Parks Department in a incredibly strong, incredibly strong position.
Financially.
Financially, but also to deal with these, these, you know, the fact of the matter is, we've antiquated playgrounds, I mean, that's just the bottom line. This is what we're talking about, and ways to enhance our terrific park system, and we do have a great park system.
I think we agreed to this when we actually agreed to the vendor. I think you guys, it, it, it's really one of the only things we should be doing with the money, is allowing for capital improvements at the parks. And I think you guys need to get on a better schedule in terms of a yearly-
We've, we've been talking about that, I've been speaking with Christine about that, she, she wants to get a spreadsheet going, so we're all on the same page. Jim already has something for a five-year plan?
Yep.
Years ago, they used to look at them and put them in different years and tell, you know exactly how much money you're gonna need.
For many years, we weren't able to ever get that capital improvement money.
Right. So now that you know-
Project just rolled over to the next year.
Right, so now that you know it's coming, it should be part of your budgetary planning that we do annually.
Next to some of the projects.
Yeah, it's the whole idea, and, and the beauty of this is, we're getting it done at no expense to local taxpayers. And it makes, I think, a heck of a lot of sense for us to create this trust for the Parks Department.
And you got a financial person there.
Yeah, we're gonna utilize her.
Legacies is, is due for turf replacement.
Legacies is due for turf replacement, but we have a turf replacement fund.
They have a separate turf replacement fund.
But we won't necessarily cover the whole expense also.
We're working on that. You know, with the ad, the addition of the Granite Knolls fields, there's more money coming in. So, you're kind of more concerned about, I, I think we'll hit the number for, for legacy when that comes, I'm thinking somewhere around 2024, 25. It's getting close, because the field's not looking so good. But we also, we also have other things that need to be, and I don't know really how to handle this, the field should actually have a maintenance plan. And that maintenance, maintenance plan is $5,000 a year per field, it's on a biannual plan, so every season they come in.
Pat? Pat's saying it was accounted for in the budget annually?
But we didn't do anything for the other, other three fields.
At Granite Knolls?
Yeah. We went with the highest one. So we should look into the budget for that. Okay.
Great.
So I, I have a question. Year, year, operating of the ball field, how much income will be generated for the ball field, you know, to cover up?
We've never, we've never actually had, since we've had Granite Knolls open, a full-
Right.
-year of legacy, Granite Knolls.
Right.
The-
Just, just when you were about to, then you had COVID, yeah.
So we, we really don't know, we don't even know what our actual costs are there yet, because we haven't completed a full year.
Full cycle through.
No, but then you have to have some kind of a plan, that how much money will cost to run every month, or, you know, every week like that, and then you can just calculate that next year, 2022 budget, you're gonna have to put some more money, or you're gonna be break even?
Correct.
Yeah, that's what we're, exactly what we're talking about, in terms of longevity and planning properly, and this allows us to be able to do that.
Yep. It's gonna give you a lot more flexibility from a budgetary standpoint, there's no doubt about it.
I agree.
Any other questions from the board? All right, then, um-
The, the, one last thing?
Sure? You sure?
It's a question.
Okay.
It's a question. In the resolution, could this be put in there that it is a conversation between the commission, the superintendent, and the town board?
It's town board authorized.
It's town board authorized only?
It will be town board authorized.
Yeah.
It will be town board authorized.
But will they have the opportunity to come before the town board?
Sure.
Of course, but it should be part of your budget, absolutely, but the town board will authorize its use.
Well, the town board authorizes all use, even, even the TNA money.
Mm-hmm.
So-
So nothing changes.
Nothing changes, same, same situation.
Right, so as long as you come yearly with your capital improvement plan, and you can lay out how you're gonna spend your dollars, then it should be part of the annual capital improvement budget.
I don't see that there ever would be a problem with coming before any-
I'm just always concerned, not with this town board, but five, 10 years down the road, who knows who's sitting here?
But it's set up in a trust for-
Well, that's why it's a capital, it's a capital improvement trust.
If it's done by a resolution, can be taken away by a resolution.
Just like everything else, but capital improvement trust is the intent of the, of the trust.
Yeah.
Capital improvements. Not operating, not paying for, you know, employees, but capital improvements. I think we should, yeah, you wanna have a resolution, creating a capital improvement trust, directing the revenue from the HESP solar energy, renewable energy project to be put-
For next week? Or do you want it now?
We'll do it right, we can do it right now.
Yeah, we don't have next week.
We don't have next week, this is our last, this is, this is until September. So we have a, we have a motion to create a capital improvement trust for the Parks and Rec Department to be, for the rev, for the 145 or 145,000, or the revenue from the HESP solar renewable energy project for the next 25 years.
Some of.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Question for the bar.
Yeah.
Do we have to spend any money to maintain those solar systems?
No. No.
Did you guys ever get the 202 lights redone or no?
No, that has not been redone, that's on their capital improvement list now. Okay, that concludes the work session portion of our agenda. We are gonna go over to public hearings, we do have three. We will begin with the first, this is to reconvene a public hearing to consider the wetlands stormwater permit application submitted by Giovanista and Lauren Apollonio. Sorry if I butchered your name, I believe the applicants are here. And I just have one question, and I think I know the answer, so it should be easy. Did you go to the planning board meeting last night?
They did.
Yes, good. Any, any issues, Mr. Tegater, if you wanna jump in here, if you wanna jump on that mic, you can, this way we can keep them at the podium. Any issues from the planning board's perspective?
Well, the only issue was similar to what we had discussed at the opening of the public hearing, which is there needs to be a coherent mitigation plan, that was discussed last night, and so the planning board, you should have a memo from them.
Yeah.
Yes.
That item number two recommends that, as a condition of approval, or you can, if you so choose, as a condition of approval, require some information that sort of delineates what the issues are in terms of encroachment, and fill, and disturbance that needs to be mitigated, and then how it is to be mitigated. The memo does state that there is some mitigation on the plan, as stated verbally, which is some of the landscape plantings around the stormwater basin. The stormwater basin, in some instances, can be considered part of the mitigation as well, because it does serve to clean the water that will go into the wetland system and the wetland buffer. And then it does go into and cite that the Apollonios are, I got that right, right?
Much better than I did.
Are, as a requirement, I think, through the Health Department, need to install a sewer, which is about 2,500 feet from their site. So they're going to install a forced main sewer line for a length of 200, 2,500 feet, or thereabouts, that needs to be clarified, which will give the possibility of an additional 11 residential properties to be able to, at some point, come into the sewer, which is in and of itself an environmental enhancement. So with those taken together, it's up to you to basically accept those things as the mitigation for what they're doing. You can expand it a little bit if you, if you care to, but, you know, that, that's your decision, but certainly what the planning board is trying to say is that you need to have a coherent plan in the record for you to base your decision on.
Very good. And John, if I'm not mistaken, from the meeting last night, the, the sense was to approve the project, let them get started, and submit that, submit these things that we already have recorded in our notes as the, as the, uh-
Yes.
Plan, correct.
That is essentially correct, and I- did draft a resolution for you, which states, in a couple of instances, that very idea, so.
Why don't we, well, we're gonna reconvene a public hearing, is there anything that you wanna add as the applicant? You don't have to, no pressure, okay, is there anyone else who wants to speak on this application? Anyone else who wants to speak on the application regarding 1789 Baldwin Road? I see none, so we'll make a motion to close.
So moved.
I have a question. This 2,500 feet sewer, you would be benefiting, do you have to pay, or you're gonna be shared for the future connection?
It's all on them.
They're, they're paying for the installation.
I'm installing everything from my house all the way up Giordano, from down Baldwin and up Giordano.
Thank you.
I'm gonna leave tee off with valves for, for any house that wants to tie in.
That's amazing.
That would be their cost after that.
Right.
Thank you.
I'm taking the whole cost of installing that whole sewer line.
Thank you.
And restoration of whatever.
Very good.
So we have, we do have a motion on the floor with a second to close public hearing.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good, so we close the public hearing, what is the town board's feeling on, uh-
Let's move it.
On next steps?
I think everyone is, all of the conditions that everyone wanted is here in the, in the resolution that John wrote.
Do you have the copy of this resolution, they have a copy of this thing, what you're supposed to be doing?
No, they don't have a copy.
Oh, okay, so after they passed the law, right?
And like John had said, the, the, the extension or the installation, I should say, of that sewer is a major environmental mitigation right there, and then there was plantings around, what was it, John?
The stormwater basin.
Stormwater basin, which is, and, and quite frankly, if they had to take down trees in that area to install septic system, probably be as many if they could have done it at that location, right?
It, it's an already disturbed site, because there was a, a house and a residence there.
Yeah.
So, for the most part, all of the redevelopment is in the area that was already disturbed. So there's about 24 trees that need to be taken down, which is a small amount, by usual standard of doing a three-quarter to one acre disturbance area.
Right.
Okay, so I'm happy to read, I'm not gonna read the whole, no, jeez, no. But we'll get to the, to the parts at the end, therefore be resolved that the public hearing for the wetland tree and stormwater permit is hereby closed, and be further resolved that the following plans and documents are approved subject to the below listed conditions, which include a drawing entitled Site Plan and SWIP Sheet 1 of 2, prepared by Ralph Mascher Monaco, dated, uh, drawing entitled Details Notes Sheet 2 of 2, again, prepared by Ralph Mascher Monaco, a report entitled Stormwater Control Plan, prepared by Ralph Mascher Monaco. Do you further resolve, John, are we still going with that part? That, your highlighted paragraph?
Yeah, I, I highlighted that for, because it's-
Okay.
Right.
Just making sure, be further resolved that the wetland and stormwater permit is granted subject to the submission of an acceptable mitigation, of acceptable mitigation plans, detailing a mitigation scheme that includes, but is not limited to, and describes a stormwater basin and its benefits, the proposed landscaping, including tree mitigation pursuant to the regulations contained in Chapter 270 of the Town Code, and the installation of the forced main sewer line and its environmental benefits. And be further resolved that the wetland and stormwater permit is granted subject to the signing of the plans by the town supervisor, and shall be valid for a period of one year from the date of this resolution. And that all work associated with the wetland and stormwater permit shall be conducted in strict compliance with approved plans. Be further resolved that the applicant will provide the town with a report stating whether the applicant has complied with the requirements of this resolution and the approved drawings by the end of the term of this permit. And be further resolved that the wetland and stormwater permit shall automatically expire upon completion of work. And be it further resolved that the below listed conditions must be completed within six months of the date of this resolution. All shall become null and void unless an extension is requested by the applicant in writing within said six months, period and granted by the town board. And there are 10 conditions listed, as well as conditions of the wetland tree and stormwater permit. And with that being said, that is the gist of the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This thing include the pool, I have not heard the word pool.
Yeah, the pool was included.
Yeah.
No, oh, I mean here, I-
Yep, pool's included, so there you go, congratulations.
Okay, we'll be up and built out by Christmas for the Christmas party?
Flabula food truck festival.
There you go, now we're talking.
Keep our fingers crossed.
Thank you for your help, we appreciate getting this across.
Congratulations.
Okay, next, we're gonna convene a public hearing to consider a proposed local law to amend Chapter 260 of the Code of the Town of Yorktown, entitled Taxation. We do have our assessor, Kim Penner. See, Kim, Kim, you wanna just come up real quick? Kim, you wanna just walk the public through one more time what we are trying to accomplish here?
Okay, what we are trying to accomplish is the ceilings for the veterans, we have an option to increase. The county has increased within the past few months. The previous ceilings were 54,000, 36, and 180,000, we're trying to go to 75,000, 50,000- We're trying to go to seventy-five thousand, fifty thousand, and two hundred and fifty thousand.
Very good.
Okay.
And, uh, forgive me, do you, forgive me for not asking this before. Offhand, do you know how many veterans, um, we, it would impact?
I know.
I forgot the number off the top of my head. I know you gave it to me.
I know, I have it in here. Probably somewhere around seven hundred.
Seven hundred? Okay.
I mean, the, the additional exemption.
Right.
I think I, I told you before, anywhere between fifty-nine cents and a hundred and eighty-one dollars.
Right, right.
It's a very small amount.
But below it in the assessment, I think it was eight thousand dollars. We'll see no change.
Okay.
Unfortunately.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Kim. So we do, uh, Moore, do you have the ad? By any chance, do you have the ad?
Oh, I'm sorry.
The publication? No worries. Take your time.
Thanks.
There's the notice. And so we will open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this issue? Yes, sir? If you could, just please state your name for the record.
Sergio Esposito. Um, how you guys doing tonight? Alice, I'm glad you're feeling better.
Thank you.
I'm glad to see you.
Thank you.
So even, although the, uh, the amount is, is a, is a smaller amount than I would have hoped, you know, anything we could do for our beloved veterans in this community, um, is, uh, we should, we should grab and seize the day on that. So, um, I would recommend that, that we accept that and move forward with this. I mean, because our veterans are very precious to us and, um, they've done a lot for us. This is not really a he, a whole, uh, a lot that we could do for them, but anything that we can do, we should do.
Any little bit is a help for them.
That's it.
I agree.
For all they gave for us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Esposito. Anybody else?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Lonnie.
Uh, I would actually just echo, uh, what, uh, Mr. Esposito just indicated. Having a son of a, of a veteran and, uh, knowing what they sacrifice. I would also in, uh, in, indicate that it's, uh, it's too bad that, uh, we can't give them more. But, uh, but whatever we can, uh, we, we need to. And, uh, while I was supervisor, we, um, we were able to give discounts at the pool and all, whatever we can do to help our, uh, veterans. Uh, and, and I know that this board, uh, feels the same way, but I just felt, uh, compelled to make the statement. And I'm in support of, uh, the, the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. Anybody else would like to speak? Anyone else?
Motion to adjourn. Motion to close.
Second.
We have a motion to close, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you very much. I want to thank our assessor, Kim Penner, and our town attorney, Mr. Rodriguez, for the help on this. Thank you very much. And Mr. Lackerman for your work with the Veterans Advisory Committee. Okay, next, we're going to convene a public hearing to consider the proposed application relating to the community block development grants for the construction of new sidewalks. We did have a presentation, uh, from our planning department, uh, describing the process by which these areas and sidewalks were identified. That was our last work session.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Just waiting for the technical
Oh.
aspect of the presentation. But while I'm waiting.
At least you're smart enough to not try to do it on your own like Joe Reno was yesterday.
Right. So while I'm waiting, um, CDBG, just by way of background, uh, has been, uh, around for many, many, many years. Your, uh, Yorktown has participated in it with the county through an organization called the Urban County Consortium, which we are a part of. And that group allows the county to receive money from the federal government and then distribute it through the CDBG grant program. So that's how every three years we find ourselves doing some grants, uh, some rounds more than others. And in this particular round, which is for twenty-twenty-two through twenty-twenty-four, which is three years, we've, uh, selected or identified, uh, two projects, both sidewalk projects. And, uh, there's a number of ways to go after grant funding, which has to benefit low mod areas. And it has to, the area typically has to have a fifty-one percent usage or fifty-one percent population of low mod. Uh, the, uh, statistics come down from this, through the Census Bureau. And our particular areas that are identified as low mod areas are mapped and given to us. And in this particular, um, uh, round, the area that is eligible is north of Route Six from the town line with Somers all the way over to Mill Street. Uh, and it does jut down into, uh, the south, southern part of, um, Route Six in the area of the Jefferson Valley Mall and a part of, but not all of Jefferson Village.
Before you go to your presentation, I just, I wanted to just bring in our town attorney, uh, because there's been news on the, on the, since we're dealing with HUD. There has been news on the HUD settlement with Westchester County. Do you want to just make sure that the board and the public is aware of what's transpired in the past week?
Um, yeah. So last week, while I was on the beach, literally, um, I received notification that the judge on the federal housing case, Judge Coat, signed an order, um, relieving the monitor of his duties and effectively terminating the consent decree. Uh, I think it was on Wednesday or Thursday. I can actually pull it up.
That's okay. Do we know what that means?
There, there are things I think I could say with some certainty that it means. And then there are other things I couldn't say, right? That, that are still open. Um, and I think a lot of those questions that are relevant to the issue before you, um, both on the CDBG program specifically and on any of the county's discretionary funding more generally are still open and have to be answered.
Have to be, when you say have to be answered, uh, meaning have to be answered by the county to give us some direction?
Well, the county would be, I think, one place to look for some answers, but ultimately the county, as, as Mr. Taggert said, is a conduit through which the Urban County Consortium can receive funds because you have to have, I think, over two hundred thousand population to receive CDBG funds. And that's why the consortium comes together and the county is the conduit for that to happen. But, you know, there, there are two avenues, right? So there, there's discretionary funding that has nothing to do with CDBG.
Correct.
And that's, that has its own sort of strings, uh, that were implemented under the consent decree. But as far as I know, and I haven't heard otherwise, uh, those strings will continue. And I can tell you that certain representations were made to the monitor, to the judge, that implied, I think, that those, that the discretionary funding policy would continue into the future, even after the consent decree was terminated. You know, the CDBG funds have their own requirements that are similar, um, that in, in large measure are not defined. They are quite vague. Uh, and, and that's where, you know, certainly my concerns are perhaps the most acute because, you know, the obligations and, and the certifications that are made are quite, can be quite broad. And I have, I have seen where, you know, broad things are interpreted broadly. So, you know, those, those are just, those are the issues as I, as I view them right now. And I think there is a significant state of flux because of what happened last week.
Right.
So there are some, there are a lot of open questions.
Right. And I think that's the key, that for, for the board's own knowledge and notification on this, is there are going to be open questions since we've engaged in this. And they are quite significant since this is a, this is actually a big deal. I don't think people realize how big of a deal it is to have, uh, the judge sign the order, uh, in this way, correct?
Yeah. Yeah. It, it's culmination of a lot of work that, that began twelve years ago.
Right.
More, really. The lit, the litigation, I think, began in two thousand and seven. But, you know, it, it started under Andy Spano, went through Rob Astorino's administration, and is now finished under George Latimer.
Right.
Can I ask, because we have someone here
Yeah.
who is fully aware of what's going on? Ken, do you want to come up and talk about what the order closing the case means to you?
Don't touch anything.
Don't break it, Ken.
In disclosure, I, I am officially the town's Community Development Advisory Group representative, the public representative from the town, um, to this committee that, uh, meets and we review the applications that are submitted from all around the county and we, um, you know, give input into things. But in terms of the, the settlement agreement, I think it's fantastic that, um, it's finally over. And it's mostly fantastic because the county succeeded in doing the things that it committed to do. The biggest, uh, one that was a financial lift was building seven hundred and fifty units of affordable housing in a number of municipalities around the town whose populations were primarily white. And this was done to affirmatively further fair housing, uh, in those communities. So this has been accomplished. It's, it's over. The county executive has, has made clear that, um, seven hundred and fifty units was never the total need that the county has for affordable housing. The monitor and court and others have made clear this, this was not the, the ceiling. This was the, the floor.
Yep.
Not even touching the need, uh, which, uh, recent housing needs assessment indicated was somewhere around eleven thousand units of affordable housing needed in the county as a whole. I just want to add, because I think we're getting a little off topic here, but that, um, the housing needs, uh, uh, assessment that was funded by the county included individual needs of the different municipalities that make up the county. So there's a specific part of the study for the town of Yorktown. And I would like to urge the town board to invite the county commissioner of planning, Norma Drummond, who has offered to come and meet and present the housing needs assessment and specifically the assessment of Yorktown and what the needs are for, for housing here. Because I think it's, it's very instructive and, and eye-opening. I do agree that there's a gray area going forward. I also think that the discretionary funding policy, until the county changes it, is in place. And it applies to many sources of funding, including the community development block grant funding. And that's where you have very specific requirements, as opposed to the general requirements under the Community Development Block Grant Program. I think, John, Taggert probably has experience of what the Community Development Block Grant Program itself requires. And, um, we're not the only, uh, county that has it. Counties all over New York State and all over the country make use of this source of funding, as well as individual municipalities with, within Westchester County that are big enough to apply on their own.
Yeah, but I think everyone is dancing around whether or not the county is going to give us money if we don't have a model law in place.
And my assessment, um, but, um, you know, it's, it's my opinion, but from the things that I have read, is that the discretionary funding policy applies to things like community development block grant funds and applies to East of Hudson funds. And that you will not get either of them unless you meet the conditions of the discretionary funding policy. There's more than one condition of it, and I think the other conditions have basically been, been met. You, um, can't, um, you can't have local preferences. So our Section Eight program and our Yorktown's tiny affordable housing program that, that's administered through the town, both eliminated local preferences a number of years ago. So we're in full compliance there. You have to affirmatively further fair housing. Now, that's a rather general statement. But if you look at what happened in the town of Yorktown as part of the county housing settlement, we had twenty-six units of homeownership housing built, Crampon Crossing, I believe is the name, across from Staples BJ Plaza.
Deer Street also, right?
We had Deer Street, Hilton's part of that, and the units in, uh, the Underhill Apartments, uh, since their
Right.
affordability restrictions were over and the county was able to put new money into that and the developers to get state money and renewed the affordability restrictions. So those units were counted as well. And then the county bought a number of single-family homes that were in foreclosure, whatever, fixed them up and sold them through the, uh, its affordable housing program. So Yorktown played a, a very important role in helping the county get to those seven hundred and fifty units. So I think we've, we've done well in that area. So the one area that we haven't done well in is having some sort of model ordinance. And I want to stress that the word is model. You don't have to adopt the model that the county has presented, but something that follows a similar principle where there's a set aside or inclusionary zoning that says you have to have X percent of affordable units. Generally, it's considered ten percent in developments above a certain side be set aside as, as affordable in regular market rate developments. So that's the one piece under the discretionary funding policy that I think Yorktown hasn't met. Uh, we did have it in place for a short time, and then it was repealed. And I think, uh, the town board should really take another look at that. And, uh, wearing another hat right now, the Community Housing Board is, you know, ready, willing, and able to sit down and talk about this with the town board and, you know, give you our feedback and recommendations.
I have a question. How much is the money for, uh, uh, you know, affordable housing, you know, the income wise? Do you know the current?
Yeah. I can answer it if you don't. The rentals are
Yeah.
Go ahead.
The rentals are sixty percent and the ownership units are eighty percent of AMI.
And I don't have those numbers in my head, but would be happy to present them.
No, it's really nice. You know, this is a very good thing to have a community, yes.
You know, um, I just have one other question, Ken. The communities around Yorktown that have a model ordinance in place are many. Am I correct?
I believe there are twenty-one
Yeah.
municipalities that have it.
But not all municipalities have the strict set aside. There are municipalities, yes?
No, no, no. I said, no, you're right.
Oh, okay. Yeah, yeah, no. So they, they have gotten creative with how they've addressed the issue. And, and they haven't all have had a strict set aside
Correct.
mandate in place.
But it, you know, some have very closely copied the model ordinance.
Right.
Some have been creative with it
Some have been creative with it.
in a way that they think fits in their community. So there are
It's their community needs.
And how, how do we stand in that, in the, in northern Westchester for the amount of affordable units compared to some of the other communities around us?
Uh, I can't answer that. I had looked at some numbers of what occurred just during the, the settlement, and I can present that to the town board in the future, but I don't know that off the top of my head.
John, do you know or?
Kim, do you know? Comparatively, no?
I know.
My, my recollection is that it's a fairly high in relation to other municipalities per capita. That's my recollection. I haven't looked at the numbers in a long time, but that's
I can look at it tomorrow.
I'd be interested, Alice, if you could.
Okay. John, we hijacked your
Thank you, Ken.
Great presentation, John.
Yeah, great job. Just, um
In closing.
Yeah, but if I can just make a point, though, regarding Norma Drummond. John, you've been in touch with her about coming to do this, uh, housing assessment presentation. We've been trying to figure out dates.
That's correct.
Unfortunately, she, at least she serves on the planning board in her home community that meets on Tuesdays.
She does.
So there's been conflicts.
She'll come.
Right, I know she will, but I just don't want people, I don't want the board to think it was out of a lack of effort that we haven't, we haven't gotten her to come make this presentation. But I know that you've been in touch with her as early as, recently as last week.
That's correct.
Right.
I don't think she can come to any work session we have. She has to come to a real meeting because that's
That's the conflict.
Those, those are her meeting nights.
Right. Okay. Anything, so you have a presentation on this, uh, application? Do you want to move forward with that, John?
I'm afraid it's not going to be as interesting as the discussion we just had, but I'll go I'll talk a little bit about concrete. So there's two projects that we're looking at. As I said, they are both in the low mod area, which is generally, uh, north of Route Six with, uh, a small arm digging across Route Six and into the southern portion. But this one up on the screen is, uh, the first one, which is Lee Road and Bank Street. And this, this is, oops, this is Lee Road here. And the, the sidewalk project is the yellow line, so it starts near this, I think this is the Sunoco Station.
Yep.
And so there is a sidewalk that ends right there. And this portion of yellow line goes all the way around this, uh, strip mall. And there is no sidewalk until you get all the way to the first driveway, to the the first driveway, to the development that was Toys R Us.
And that strip plaza has the post office, J.B. Bagels, Raymond Opticians.
And where I have the cursor right now generally is a bus stop. And there is a bench there, but there is no hardscape for people to safely walk on.
Right.
So this seemed to be a good candidate. That didn't work.
I was actually there the other day at Raymond's. Quite a bit of traffic.
There is.
So the left picture is what I described near the Sunoco Station. We're looking north towards the strip mall, which is, you can see on the right.
Sidearm.
The right picture is the section right in front of that strip mall on Lee Boulevard.
Did you get, did you really take a picture of Robin walking on the rest?
Did you get a release sign?
I did not get a release. It's still a point of contention to this very day. This is, the left shot is the corner at Bank Street. So this is the corner. You can see there is, the only thing that exists is a small asphalt that comes in from the corner and brings you into the parking lot. The right side is looking from Lee down Bank Street, and you can see there's no sidewalk there as well. And this is looking from the rear curb cut of the strip mall back towards Lee on Bank. And then the following one is just turning around and looking at the last segment towards Toys R Us. Okay, so that is the Lee and Bank Street. The amount of this project is $91,000, of which we are able to ask for half of that, which comes to 48 and change, so we would be responsible for the other half of that.
But we lay out the total amount and then get reimbursed?
That is exactly correct.
Just so Pat's clear.
Yes.
So this is basically no matching?
Yes, 50% matching.
Yeah, that's why.
So we lay out the whole cost and then we get a 50% reimbursement?
But in a way, it's good, you know, more you have a contribution from us, then it's easier to get it.
Ah.
Yeah.
This is not an ill intentioned problem. Okay. Okay. The next project is south of Route 6 on Hill Boulevard. And what I'm showing you there is this is the mall entrance road from Hill. This is into the parking lot of Jefferson Village. This is the tennis court, and this is a small pond. This is Village Road. And right behind here on the north is where it was closed off for the recent project, which is now open. So there is a stretch of sidewalk from this point down to this corner of Village Road, which exists, but is in, I don't want to do that all the time, not very good shape. You can see that it's been recently patched.
Yeah.
It is pretty unsafe. Asphalt is not a good sidewalk material, because it, A, it doesn't last long, and it's not dimensionally stable really, because it undulates quite a bit. So those are the two pictures, one looking north, one looking south. This is about 250 lineal feet of sidewalk, and this project costs about $61,000 and change, again, half of which will be a grant. The other half is our match, which comes to, in the neighborhood of $30,000...
$500 and change.
$500 and change, correct. And that is all I have describing the projects.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah.
May I say something? Why don't you say matching grant, not only grant?
Yeah, it's a matching grant.
Well, you know, I mean, most of the people don't know about the matching, okay?
Well, we're responsible for 50%, as I said.
We lay out, home out, and we get reimbursed 50%. That's how it works.
Well, you don't have to, you can get 10% too, and you don't get the money, I mean, right?
No.
So 50 is better.
No, 50% in this round is a required match. So all of the communities in the urban county consortium, any grants that they're putting in, they are required to do a 50% match.
Oh, okay.
Councilman Roque?
Some of them are like 10% too, or 15.
Right, but not this one.
Yeah, no, there are so many different kind of variety to choose, you know?
Of grants?
Yeah.
Of course.
But this particular grant is a 50%.
Yeah.
John, can you explain why it's important to either create the sidewalks or repair the sidewalks?
Well, of course, the first one is safety. Public safety is number one. That's always one of the prime movers in repairing sidewalks, providing sidewalks. ADA requirements come in. We do often see intrepid people that require some ADA amenities, and in lieu of them, they ride on the streets in their, in their...
In their wheelchairs.
...so on and so forth, which is a complete safety problem. The second is, in the, as the example of Lee Boulevard, there is no sidewalk there. There is sidewalks throughout that network, so you cannot fully avail yourself of moving on the sidewalk system, because it doesn't, it's not complete. Secondly, there is a county bus stop there, which I, if it wasn't used, it wouldn't be there. So in order to provide safe passage for those folks that need to use the bus, it's important to have it as well. So those are the prime two reasons that I think that we try to do them.
You know, when you see people who are maneuvering themselves in a wheelchair, you understand the importance of these sidewalks.
Yeah, even worse, walkers, when they get caught in a groove.
Yes, walkers as well, and there are, you know, there's plenty of folks that are not quite steady on their feet any longer, and the slightest anomaly in a sidewalk can cause them to trip and fall. And so maintaining them...
Why would you be laughing, Alice?
Because I know about that.
One of the best committees, I think, that has been formed is the Accessibilities Committee.
Yes, yes.
And this would only aid to that.
Correct.
Because those folks do have a bit of trouble getting around and even to get on the buses and so on and so forth. So...
Any other questions from the board? Anything you would like to add, John?
Nothing that I'd like to add. I gave you a resolution, which I hope you have.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Well, we're going to open the public hearing first.
Oh, you didn't open it yet?
Now we will.
We will now.
Oh, okay. Do I need to do this again?
Well, we're convening.
We're reconvening.
Just one question on this. Does this...
Oh, I'm sorry, it's a convene, excuse me. It's a convene.
To convene. Sorry. Does this include that, the CDBG money? Or is this, this is the CDBG?
This is the CDBG. Correct. Okay, so let's open the floor. We're going to have Maura, do you have the notice? There you go. Sorry about that. Thank you. Maura's shown the notice that was published announcing the public hearing. Again, this is, we are convening, not reconvening the public hearing. Mr. Kopstein's up first.
Good evening. And before I read my statement, first, I'm kind of disappointed that we had a colloquy on affordable housing. It didn't appear on the agenda. And if it had, a number of people here would have had presentations. I think it was unfair that it was done the way it was done. That's first. Secondly, I'm going to talk about grants. I am not opposed to sidewalks. Grants are generally sourced in two places, federal and state, although some can be private or from another governmental source. Grants, regardless of source, are rarely granted without requirements, a quid pro quo, so to speak. These requirements can be share-based, pre-grant, post-grant, or concurrent with the grant. An example of share-based can be an 80/20 split, or any split, if you will. An example of a pre-grant is the $10 million we hope to receive from the East of Hudson Watershed Agreement. We gave up development rights years ago for the right to get these funds today. I'll point out that we're not getting the interest on the funds. That's going elsewhere. An example of concurrent grants is where we bill the grant administrator as work is These are incremental payments. An example of a post-grant is a requirement that we do something after we receive the grant. One of the most onerous of these post-grants is the Community Block Development Grant. This grant usually has a requirement like surrendering local zoning or mandating of certain housing programs and policies. Towns like Yorktown are not looked upon favorably by the current leadership in Washington. Towns like Yorktown are well-managed and fiscally sound, and for that, we thank the town board. Although we can, it is not necessary for us to feed at the socialist-friendly funding trough in Washington. Because of the post-grant requirements of a Community Block Development Grant, I urge you not to approve and to vote no for an application for a grant under the Community Block Development Program. Whether or not anything I say tonight has had any value, I don't know, since the resolution has already been written. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kopstein.
Thank you.
And it does have great value. We appreciate that.
Everybody's.
Next.
Good evening. Mark Lieberman, Wall Street. So I know the shopping area very well by Estela Scala's Mall and across the street by DeChico's Shopping Center and TD Bank. So I agree with the need for a sidewalk there, because I see people getting off the bus and walking in all directions. But there's also a need for a sidewalk across the street on the DeChico's side for the same reason. And I would say even more important, which is probably so much easier for you to do, there should be crosswalks at the intersection that connects the bus stop corner with the TD side and the DeChico side. So please consider that, because people have a very hard time navigating those streets. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Lieberman.
One final comment. I would appreciate you wearing masks.
Thank you, Mr. Lieberman. Thank you. Anybody else would like to speak on the application?
Sergio Esposito, good evening once again. Just a question on aesthetics. Is the sidewalk, I mean, I'm assuming it's going to be concrete? Because I've seen some sidewalks in town that are asphalt and...
They'd be concrete.
They'd be concrete.
Yeah, okay, that's really the only thing, because the asphalt sidewalks really, you know, are unsightly, I think, and this would be a great opportunity to not only facilitate a need in our town, but also beautify it as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Esposito.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Strauss?
Dan Strauss, 54-year resident. I wasn't prepared to speak on this at all, but I'm just going to follow what Mr. Kopstein said. I'm not in favor, if I get this right, on any grant that is contingent on affordable housing. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Strauss. Appreciate that. Next.
I'm Lonnie Gilbert.
Gilbert.
I have mixed feelings about this grant, and I just think these are things that you should consider before you make your decision. I lived up here over 30 years, and I don't see many people walking in those areas, but it's possible it's the old field of dreams. If you build it, they will come. So that's, maybe, you know, that's the answer. But with that said, understand that what will also come is liability to the town, because if those sidewalks are made, then the town has to keep up and clean them during the winter. So if you have icy spots and patches, the town could be open to liability if you've created a place for them people to work.
If you already have sidewalks.
So, I'm sorry.
There's a sidewalk already at Jefferson Village there.
Not where they're, not over near the Estela.
Not the other one, over by there, no.
Right, but what you're doing, what I'm saying is when you create one, where there is none, when you create one, you create liability.
When there's a high...
And maintenance.
Right, but when there's also a high-traffic area...
We open up park, we create liability.
Just have them walk in the grass.
All I'm saying is, just keep that in mind, that's all.
No, of course.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert.
Okay, thanks.
There's my rate of issues.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. Next.
Good evening, Susan Siegel.
Good evening.
Siegel.
Before I get to the sidewalk specifics, since there were other comments about the funding in general, I would just like to say two things. One, I think that I would hope that the town board would correct some misstatements that were made about the East of Hudson Funds and the origin of those funds, right? That's very important, especially to the people who are waiting for sewers, okay? Also, I urge you to resolve the linkage to the model ordinance, because the $10 million East of Hudson is waiting, waiting, waiting. And you have said at previous meetings that you, that the application to the state comptroller's office is ready to be sent, and that it cannot be sent until that IMA is passed. So I urge you, for the sake of those 315 homeowners who have been waiting for 40 years, to please get that resolved. And that ties in with what Ken Belfer said about needing to deal with the set-aside law, which has been pending for far too long, okay? That said, let me get to the sidewalks. And let me preface my comments that some of you may not know, that I live in Jefferson Village. I've lived there for four years, and for four years, I have walked that sidewalk on Hill Boulevard, because the people from condos 8, 9, 10, and 11 would be the ones who use that, okay? And I live in one of those condos. For four years, I have walked it many times during the week at different hours. Now, I can't say that I have seen it 24/7, but I can tell you that the usage is very, very, very limited. Also, if people from any of those four condos are going to the clubhouse, if you know Jefferson Village, and I'm sure you do, because you campaigned there, if you walk down from 9, 10, and 11, you go through 8, and you go through 8 to go around where the tennis courts or pickleball courts are to the clubhouse, so you don't even have to use the sidewalk. You also know that in terms of the safety issue, there is a bus stop roughly, I think, is by where the clubhouse is, and that's on grass. So when you talk about safety and you need the sidewalk for safety, remember that you have one right in front of the clubhouse in Jefferson Village on grass, okay? I also walk to the post office at Jefferson Village on Lee Boulevard. I use the pedestrian activated lights to cross, and then I walk on that little piece of concrete, and then you walk on the grass, and there's no problem, all right? I don't think you're going to find somebody in a wheelchair crossing Route 6, so you're not dealing with that. And I have seen once or twice somebody in a wheelchair with an aide walking on the asphalt sidewalks. So in terms of, sorry about this, do you mind if I take it off or, okay, I have been vaccinated. So in terms of usage, do you have any kind of survey, any kind of statistics that say how many people walk, whether you do it on the Hill Boulevard side or on the Lee, all right? We know only too well that we are not a walking community. And I walk, and I have walked sidewalks, concrete sidewalks in Yorktown Heights that are in worst condition, all right? So you have one is the safety issue. You have the usage. Does the usage warrant the spending of the money? Now let's get to the condition. That picture, that's the one on Hill Boulevard, looks awful. But do you know why they have that, the dark spot? Because over the winter, the curb was destroyed. So the highway department, thank you, Dave isn't here, but thank you, they fixed the curb. But there is nothing, absolutely nothing, wrong with the blacktop part, all right? When you're walking, you don't walk where the curb patching was done, you walk on the center, and it is totally safe. So it's ugly, yes, but it is totally safe. I can't talk about the condition at Lee because that doesn't exist. So what this boils down to, and I am a firm, firm supporter of CDBG, we have gotten well over, I think when I was supervisor in 2010, we talked about having gotten $1 million in CDBG. And that's more than a decade ago. So CBG is very important, and we should continue to belong to the consortium for other benefits. But when the town has to spend $79,000, it's a question of what do you spend it on? Do you spend it on sidewalks that either aren't in bad condition? Do you spend it on sidewalks that either aren't in bad condition and don't need to be repaired, or possibly are not needed because the usage is so minimal? Or could you use $79,000 on something else? If you ask Dave Paganelli what he could do with $80,000, oh my, he would have a ball, okay? And he wouldn't have to take money from one budget item, line item, to put into another to do important projects. Thankfully, we're spending the money on the paving, and I thank you for that. But before you go ahead and spend the 50% match, think about what else. Talk to Dave, talk to possibly Dan, see what, from the engineering point of view, but I think this is more in Dave's purview in terms of drainage, stormwater work, okay? That is much more important, and I think you have to look at priorities. Just because we're eligible for $80,000 doesn't mean that we have to spend $80,000 on a project that we do not need. Again, it is totally safe, and I say this as somebody who walks. Yes, thankfully, I'm healthy and I don't need a walker, but you don't see people with walkers walking that.
Maybe you don't see them because they can't walk on it because it's uneven.
And the people who walk down, who walk down from condos 10, 9, 10, and 11, there are two pieces of sidewalks on both sides, and then there's a section from eight to Hill that doesn't have a sidewalk, and they walk in the street. And I tell you this as experience walking for four years, pre-COVID, during COVID, when I did see more walkers, and now we're getting a little bit back, all right? Do a survey, put a little marker out, ask how many people are using that from those condos, and think about, and ask Dave, ask him for a list of what he could do with $80,000 that would provide many more benefits to many more people and would solve critical drainage problems. Thank you.
Can I just respond to you, Susan? And I don't have a dog in this fight, but one of the things that Tommy just talked about was the good news that we have an accessibility committee. When you say we are essentially throwing the money away, you don't know whether or not people who have disabilities don't walk there because they can't walk there, you don't know whether or not people who are not in the new area where John would like to place a sidewalk. I think for so long, for too long, those of us with abilities have just completely decided that you people with disabilities don't exist, and I'm not going to do anything for you.
Alice, the Hill Boulevard one has the dips, okay? I've been in Yorktown 51 years, and I remember, I can't think of her name because she's no longer here, but she had a slight disability, and she used to tell me the difficulty of just stepping down from the curb, all right? And something I was never aware of. And this goes, this predates the Disabilities Act. So that's why we have these nice dips. And the Hill Boulevard one does have the dips. So it is, it is not a problem, all right? And the ones within Jefferson Village, which are the responsibility for Jefferson Village, have the dips.
Which is good.
So I'm talking about Hill Boulevard, it is accessible. I've even seen somebody on the link, the link between Hill that goes into the JV Mall, that's a blacktop, blacktop, it has concrete curbs, but it's blacktop. And again, I walk that, and I've seen somebody in a wheelchair with an aid walk on that because it has the dips. So that is accessible, and accessibility is important. I can't say that it's an issue at Lee, but I really wonder how many more people would really use that sidewalk. Because you can go from the gas station on the grass, as I go into the post office, and then if you have to go to JV Bagel, you then just go through the parking lot. And again, it's, the issue is how many people would benefit when you spend your money? That's always an issue for you. You have limited funds, and you have to say, where do I get the biggest bang for the buck? And that's all I'm saying is, just because you're getting $80,000 from CBGG doesn't mean you should spend the $80,000 here. Unfortunately, we are limited in where we can spend the CBGG money.
Susan, I hear what you're saying. I'm just saying that I would rather hear from someone that has more, that could really speak on behalf of people with disabilities as to whether or not they could walk in that area.
Ask them, as I say, and the point was made about the critical fact that there's a county bus stop on Lee. Well, I'm telling you, there's a county bus stop on Hill that's on grass. So let's, let's compare apples to apples. So that's an issue. Yes, talk to somebody. I don't know how, where you could get that information, and if you find that, other people will say, oh, if you make it a concrete sidewalk, I will walk it. Fine. But I'm questioning that, especially for Hill because you have a safe sidewalk. Ugly, yes, but 100% safe. And I have no idea how long that sidewalk has been there. I gather, my guess would be a very, very long time. And it does get, does get plowed.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Yes, you can come back. If you can restate your name, please.
Yeah, sure. Dan Strauss.
Is it still 54 years or do it go to 55?
No, 54.
Are you sure?
It's 55, another couple of months.
Okay.
Another couple of months.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I wasn't prepared to talk on this, but now I've listened to some very intelligent people, pros and cons, and I appreciate your comment about disabled people. But you know how I feel about the town of Yorktown. No one walks here.
Yeah.
Pretty much.
I know.
Pretty much no one walks. I go to Jefferson Valley, I go to Mohegan Lake, I drive around, I went out to Home Depot, and I drove, and I drove into your area the other day to, just to see what was going on. There's no one walking. Nobody walks. I'm not saying nobody, but hardly anyone walks.
Do we have sidewalks where we live?
In Jefferson Valley, I never see anyone walking down Lee Boulevard or the other, or Hill Boulevard. They never walk there. I've seen like two people crossing Route 6 because you take your life in your hands if you do that.
That's true.
And you're going to say that a person on a, in a wheelchair? I think you should do everything for disabled people. Everything you can for disabled. But you're going to tell me that someone's going to go in a wheelchair with someone pushing them and go across Route 6 or use those? No. You manufacture a lot of stuff. I really think that you manufacture a lot of stuff as a board. I really do. And I just think, again, what I said before, that's another story. And again, I will say, how did that even discussion come up at this meeting? That's my opinion on that. Because I have thoughts on that. So more importantly than for the people who walk, I don't think they walk. So if you're going to spend $80,000, I think you're missing the boat.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Strauss.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Belfer?
Ken Belfer, good evening again. First, I want to say that one of the very terrible strings associated with community development block grant funding applications is that the town board's required to hold a public hearing about it, which is what you're doing tonight, and thank you for doing that. It's important to get the public input. The comp plan of the town of Yorktown talks about promoting walkable hamlet centers.
Right.
And I think the Lee and Bank sidewalk additions are just the perfect example of doing that. Hill Boulevard, I went out and looked at both of these locations over the, over the weekend. I would semi-agree with Susan that the sidewalk is not in terrible condition, but it's not in good condition. Clear, it's not even, the sidewalk kind of rolls and dips a bit, and you have all these asphalt patches where it really was deteriorating. It also, keep in mind that it connects to another section of sidewalk, which is the section of sidewalk that leads up to Route 6 and connects with a whole other network of sidewalks. And on the other end, it connects with sidewalks leading into the Jefferson Valley Mall. I think you have to think not only about today, but about economic development and the importance, once again, of having walkable hamlet centers. And I think this funding application accomplishes that. Part of it is to make it safer at the bus stops and to create accessible curb cuts, and that is in the funding application specifically. And I do think that's important for promoting accessibility. Now, the application deadline was at the end of June of this year. So that has passed, and I assume in order, because it came up in between town board meetings in order to preserve the right to apply, that the application was actually submitted. So we should be clear about that, that there's an application in for the sidewalks. This is an application for a three-year funding period that's in the future, 2022 through 2024. Not all applications that are submitted get funded. I understand that there's some concern about strings. I don't really agree with that concern. I think that there aren't serious strings in the way there are serious strings with the discretionary funding policy of the county, which applies to this and all other county funds, including East of Hudson. So I really don't think that concern about strings should be an obstacle to the town board in deciding whether or not to sort of confirm the submission of this application. Yes, there's an evolving situation legally about discretionary funding policy potentially with the end of the county settlement agreement. We don't know what the county will do in the future, we just know what exists now. But keep in mind, this is a competitive funding application, community development block grants. You don't necessarily get what you apply for. And if you do get it, if in the future you don't like strings that are attached to it, you can decide not to accept the funds if you're awarded the funds. So I personally am in favor of you authorizing the submission of the application as opposed to calling for the withdrawal of the application. It keeps all your options open for the future, and if you think these sidewalks are a benefit to the town for now and for the future, I think you should go forward with the application. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes?
I just want to state, I too am fully vaccinated, having had COVID. I have plenty of antibodies. Good evening, members of the board and ladies and gentlemen. I appreciate this opportunity to speak at this public hearing regarding CBDG. Supervisor Slater wisely pointed out at the work session on July 27th that everyone knows that there are prerequisites and requirements linked to these types of grants. John Tegger, Director of Planning, also made it a strong point in his presentation. Councilman Patel was also interested in these requirements on that same evening, calling them strings, knowing full well that there are indeed strings attached to this grant. The proposed application would provide funding for new sidewalks along Hill Boulevard, Lee Boulevard, and Bank Road. I asked the same question. Why do we need new sidewalks in a very commercial area where there is little or no pedestrian traffic? There are sidewalks there already. I walked there yesterday. They're perfectly safe. And I agree, most people do not walk. There are sidewalks there already, but they're not in need of repair, except in small patches here and there. Councilman Lactaman stated that this could be dangerous for pedestrians, although most people prefer driving. There are those that are indeed enthusiastic walkers. Clearly, they enjoy walking on less traveled areas, not commercial streets with high traffic density like Co Boulevard and Lee Boulevard. Of course, we are all concerned and don't want anyone to fall, but these patches can be repaired without a grant. This grant is in the amount of $150,000. Supervisor Slater said he was much more concerned with a far more pressing problem involving grants for Hallick's Mill Sewer District, $10 million. Also, the $1.2 million allocated from Congressman Montier Jones, and the $3.8 million from the American Recovery Act totaling over $15 million, saying that the board can handle the $150,000 in-house. I can't leave you out, Councilman Indiana. Councilman Indiana said he doesn't want to turn down money that is thrown at him, but he wisely asked, at what cost regarding the prerequisites more commonly known as, yes, indeed, the strings attached to it? He stated, we can take care of that on our own. Members of the town board, I know you have a great deal on your plate, and you give a great deal of your time in weighing the pros and cons before each vote. I respectfully ask you to set aside Community Block Development Grant. We don't need it, as you yourselves have pointed out. Any sidewalk repairs can be taken care of in-house. I ask that you focus your attention on the far more imminent problems like Hallick's Mill and other grants for over $15 million instead of a $150,000 grant. I thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else would like to speak on the application? Anyone else would like to speak on the application? Turn to the board. Thoughts and, thoughts, next steps?
I had a question for John, actually.
Go ahead.
John, do we have any statistics on walking people there or no?
I don't have statistics on the number of people walking there. But we've been here before, and I've heard these arguments before, and I will make an example, which is the section of sidewalk that goes from Kear Street to Downing Drive. Now, on either side of, on either block, there was sidewalks, in other words, from Downing Drive to the intersection, and from Kear Street to this intersection right out here, the section in between was missing. There was a lot of skepticism when we went for that sidewalk, that nobody walks, shouldn't do it, shouldn't spend money on our constituents. And it turns out that once that sidewalk was built, that middle portion is the one that is used more than the other two. And it's used by whom? By the people in Beaver Ridge. They're the most direct recipients of that. Now, is it used where there's traffic on it all the time? No, but people can avail themselves that need to walk into town, and they couldn't before, and the effort to make that, I think, was well worth it. I think this is the same case here. If I can go on on some of the points that were raised.
Well, I was going to say in fairness also, I, you know, you mentioned Beaver Ridge.
Yeah.
I know at least two people that are wheelchair bound, that, and like you said, taking, taking your lives in your hand on Route 6, but they cross 118.
118, exactly.
It'd be even worse.
Yeah.
At times, so I've definitely seen that.
I've seen that, of course.
Yep. And if you speak to the manager at Uncle Giuseppe's, he will tell you the amount of his carts that get left behind.
Sure.
Because I go in and, because Mr. Strauss brought it to our attention, I go in, every time I go in there, I look and see what's there and go over and say, hey, you know, you have some carts there, can you bring them up? And he's like, it's an everyday fight.
Yes. And conversely, I think that in terms of walking stats, I don't think that none has presented here tonight in terms of the lack of walking. But I don't want to have those direct discussions. I think that I would like to point out that... those direct discussions. I think that I'd like to point out that the little vignette that I just told you as an example, also, you can look to the state. New York State DOT has a mandate, whenever there's a state DOT project, that they have to try to do pedestrian amenities. And they do them in areas where you would expect even less walking than we see in these instances. So I think the idea of sidewalks is often overlooked and not given, you know, its proper consideration. I'd like to also point out that in terms of safety, first, the bus stop that was mentioned on Hill Boulevard is outside of the area that is eligible, which is why it's not included. Secondly, in terms of the safety of this, if you can look, if you look at that left picture, you see the drain over there, and that is a curb-type drain, curb box. The box is standing above that sidewalk, which in and of itself, as an example, is a tripping hazard. In terms of ADA requirements, the ADA specifications do not say provide a "dip," quote-unquote "a dip," at the end of a sidewalk. There are stringent specifications for the construction of ramps, curb cuts, the number and the amount of connections in the sidewalks, you know, the divisions, how much, how wide they can be. It is a very highly specified set of requirements in the ADA requirements. So to say that that sidewalk is just fine is false. It would not comply with any ADA requirements whatsoever. I don't think so, other than it is fairly flat. Those are the points I wanted to make. In terms of the debate about the strings, I think there has been no specifics. And I think if you were to debate that, you should debate actual specifics. What are the strings?
I agree with you.
I think there is probably, in the public, rife misinformation about what those strings are. And if you're to debate it, I think you should debate the specifics.
John, before you sit down, that this particular project here that's up on the screen now would be a rehabilitation of that particular sidewalk, correct? Could that CDBG money be used in other areas of the town to rehabilitate?
No.
No.
Refresh my memory on that.
Okay. It can be used only in the areas that are mapped as the low-mod areas from the census data. In this case, in this round, it is only that section north of Route 6, town line by Somers, Mill Street, and then there's the finger that comes down by the mall into this area. And it really ends at the end of the sidewalk along the road that goes into the mall. So that's the only area that we can get CDBG funds for now, unless we go out in particular areas and do income surveys and knock on doors, ask how much they make. And if there's 51%, then it would be eligible. But that's a survey. That's another effort.
Right, right. Yeah, I was just, I was just thinking about the, if we could use some of that money, like we said, we could, we could willfully pay for this ourselves to get done. And if it's a place that we even deem that should be done, whether it's that, this particular area, or it's Kear Street, or it's wherever it might be, or it's East Main and Shrubow, that we take that money and we could do it ourselves. And until we get that model ordinance in place, or we review the model ordinance, that we probably should hold off. That's what I'm thinking. Because with new sidewalks even comes a caveat of other things. You got cleaning, maintaining, replacement. And one of the things that we don't have in our code, or if it is there, I didn't see it, is when a piece of sidewalk in front of an individual business house, whatever the case may be, is broken, it needs to be repaired. The town doesn't repair it. I believe it should be on that individual business homeowner, whatever the case might be, such as it is in Peekskill and a myriad of other towns, I'm sure. So that opens a whole other ball of wax, a whole other box that we can't get into tonight. But, I mean, like I said, if the board deems that this is the area that they want to do before we sign into this contract, I mean, we have the money, and it costs $150,000 for argument's sake, I mean, we could do it ourselves.
Yeah. Understood. I mean, we already have a contract with the county in this regard. So we have a generalized contract to be in the urban county consortium that goes back a number of years, and it gets renewed every, every number of years. So we're in it already. We have that contract of whatever the strings are, I think. I just want to remind everybody that about seven or eight years ago, when the first report came out, there's a couple of phrases that I think are important. Furthering fair and affordable housing. And then, seven or eight years ago, there was a discussion about impediments to furthering fair and affordable housing. And all of the zoning codes were looked at around the county. Yorktown, now at the time, we did have the model ordinance, but at the time, Yorktown was one of the examples.
Yes.
To be held high in terms of not having impediments to affordable housing. When you talk about furthering, furthering fair and affordable housing, what I think you're not talking about, by virtue of the example of other municipalities that have adopted the model ordinance without the set aside, that does not imbue you with the requirement to build or provide affordable housing. The overriding requirement, in my view, in my experience, is not having impediments that prevent a developer from producing affordable housing, which many of the municipalities in Westchester had. So that's what I mean about talking about specifics and what the actual strings are. So I just want to remind everybody of that.
Thank you, John.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, John.
Adam?
Thoughts on the board? Give me two seconds, if you could, Ms. Segal.
Could we?
We haven't made a motion yet. I wanted to see what the board wanted to do.
I want to, I ask Adam.
Yep. Well, I'm sorry. What was the question?
I just ask if he had any comments on that with his interpretation of, because I know he works very closely with.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Well, there's a variety of things I agree with, some things I don't necessarily agree with, some things that aren't really clear. You know, what John said about the analysis of Yorktown zoning code, I don't know, at this point, probably six, seven years ago, is correct. The county itself said that Yorktown zoning code was set up in such a way that it did not constitute an impediment to the building of fair and affordable housing. But again, that was, one of the main factors, I think, in the analysis, I shouldn't say it that way, one of the things that was certainly considered was that we had the model ordinance in place, and we had this exclusionary requirement. It's, it's clear to me that, you know, that is the big issue, whether that's going to be required or not moving forward. And, you know, I, I'm not as maybe optimistic as others, because I have personal experience in, in these disputes. And I'm happy to, you know, address any other issues, you know, particular questions, if I can. But I, you know.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to see if the board had any thoughts on next steps.
I'm confused.
Mm-hmm.
We talked in two public hearings in this one, one, one.
I know we are.
One thing. I don't even know what.
Two are being, well, the two are being conflated, because I think there is a, the issue, again, of what the prerequisites are in order to, or what are the requirements of receiving these dollars, which I think is a viable discussion.
That's a real issue. And I think until we understand that, John and I, I don't know that we can move forward.
Yeah, I feel the same way. My feeling is we should adjourn the hearing.
Yep.
Until we get more answers, especially in light of the fact that the county did settle with the housing lawsuit. So we still don't know what, what that means. But I do think there's still too many unanswered questions that we've heard concerns about tonight that we can't definitively answer. So my feeling is to adjourn, and let's spend the next couple of weeks trying to get those answers, and then we can come back.
Can I just say one thing about people don't walk in Yorktown? Well, there are not a whole lot of places where there are sidewalks where you can walk.
Right.
I will say, I've been walking with the dogs through town. Mr. Strauss saw me, and I ran into, the last couple of times I was there, Nancy that used to work with John. And actually, today she was coming off a four-mile walk, which made me feel really.
That was my best when I walked my dog. And I don't have a dog anymore.
I'll lend you two of them.
Okay. I don't mind.
I think Ms. Segal wanted to speak.
I did, too.
Okay, Ms. Strauss?
I just want to address this issue of walkability and sidewalks, because despite the fact that I say I'm opposed to those two sidewalks, I strongly, very strongly believe in sidewalks. And I have walked the sidewalks in Yorktown Heights because you can walk them. I have walked from Town Hall up to what used to be Turco's. I've walked around. I've walked down Front Street, wherever there are sidewalks. And I keep thinking, I just forget to do it. The sidewalk on Downing from Commerce to 118. Take a look at it. It's a concrete sidewalk, but I think it needs repair. I just, I've been on it recently, but I really haven't paid attention. I know, thankfully, when they redid the building, I'll just call it the one next to Wall Hours, that sidewalk was an utter mess, because I would park at Turco's and then maybe walk to CVS or the bank. And thankfully, when they had to do their site plan, the planning board made them redo the sidewalk, okay, at their expense. But take a look at the sidewalks we have now, especially the one on Downing. I used to walk down Front Street. That sidewalk was a mess, but I don't think that many people walked down there. But yes, I know we're not a walkable community, but having sidewalks in our hamlets is critical and can enhance them. I only wish we had the money to put sidewalks down Veterans Road, from Commerce way down across the field, because everybody walks in the road there.
Absolutely.
But that's a major, major project, and unfortunately, it doesn't qualify for funds. But take a look at the concrete sidewalks we do have and see what they can be done. And again, it's prioritizing the use of your money, because that's what this all boils down to. But I do say, please move ahead on the model ordinance. And so let's get that East of Hudson money done and get that IMA signed. And let's also concerned about the rescue, rescue money. But that East of Hudson money has been delayed and delayed and delayed, and we've got to get that moving. And that ties to the affordable housing.
Thank you, Ms. Segal. Mr. Strauss, follow-up?
Yep. Thank you. Dan Strauss, 54-year resident.
Still 54 years?
Still 54. Ms. Roker, we discussed walkability.
We do. We do.
And I told you, you can walk anywhere in Yorktown. The only walk place you can't walk in Yorktown on a sidewalk is on Maple Hill Street, going down towards the post office. There is no sidewalk there. It goes down for a little bit. It goes down to the back where the dumpsters, the filthy dumpsters are, behind TJ Maxx, and it ends there. And there's no further sidewalk going down towards the post office. There are sidewalks in the whole of Yorktown Heights, in the Heights section, because I walk them. I've walked hundreds of miles through the town. There is no correlation between sidewalks and walkability. People choose not to walk.
Well, there are no sidewalks in neighborhoods.
I made that clear last week at the meeting. They choose to drive. They choose to drive in Mohegan. They choose to drive in Jefferson Valley and in Crom Pound and in Lake, what's the one other that's in the overlay district, the?
Lake Mohegan.
No.
Oh, it's Osceola.
Osceola. They choose to drive. There is no correlation between sidewalks and walkability in this town. If you want, if you can ascertain to Mr. Tegater how many people walk on those streets where you want to fix the sidewalks, that would be very helpful. The other thing, the money. How much is the money at stake? $80,000 or $160,000?
All in. It'll be 80, once we get reimbursed.
If you can fix all the side, or some of the sidewalks that need repair, to your point, figure that out. If you take a 20-foot section and it needs repair, how much is it going to cost? And go through the town or in Justin Jefferson Valley.
Okay.
Wherever you want, see how much it costs. Do it in-house, if you can. Those are my final comments.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Strauss. Mr. Esposito?
Yep. How you guys doing again?
Good, sir.
Sergio Esposito. I think, honestly, I think you guys are getting not a fair shake on this, this evening. I understand some people believe that our town is never going to be walkable. But for me, the definition of insanity is if you do the same thing over and over again, and you expect different results. So I think, I think that it requires some kind of vision, that maybe sometime in the future, people may want to walk. And walkability is more than just having sidewalks. It's having some kind of inner circle where there's, there's things that you could do. And, you know, what comes first, the chicken or the egg? I don't know. But that's something that we could go over some other point in the future, where we could possibly re-envision the town. But the town board has to juggle a lot of things. And the town board has to juggle between maintenance and repair, okay? Do we wait for this kind of okay sidewalk to get completely destroyed, then it costs us triple the amount? Or do we do maintenance on it when an opportunity arises? In the beginning, I thought it was some random thing, that we just picked this, this section of town. Now I'm finding out that it wasn't a random thing. It was actually something that the money for the, for the grant requires this section. We can't use it anywhere else. So I understand that. But, you know, there are other places in town that, that need repair. But we also have to think about maintenance. And if you wait for everything to break down, it's just, it's not going to be, it's more expensive doing it that way. So you got to juggle a lot of things. And I think you guys are doing a good job.
Thank you, Mr. Esposito. So from the board's standpoint, again, I put out the fact that I think we need to adjourn.
Yeah.
I see some nods, yes. We have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. We'll adjourn the public hearing. All right, we're going to go to resolutions. That's usually when everyone in the audience leaves, but I'm glad everyone's sticking around. Personnel, we are going to accept the resignation of Marcel Copeland from the Public Safety Department. And I do want to say, Marcel, I saw him on, on Friday. Marcel was in the Police Department, on staff with our maintenance staff there. Marcel, and Officer Yules here, so he can attest, I think, to Marcel, what a great guy Marcel is. Marcel is moving on to the NYPD, and we wish him the absolute best
Well, yeah.
in, in that.
Good luck, Marcel.
I almost, I almost didn't recognize him here already.
Already had his, his hair cut off?
Oh, yeah. Already had his hair cut off. But Marcel is just a great guy, and we're going to miss him dearly, but wish him the best with the NYPD. We're also going to accept the retirement of Detective Brian Shanahan. And I know Alice, Councilman Roker.
Special man.
Very special individual. I had the pleasure of seeing him on Friday on his last day. And just a tremendous detective, member of the Police Department. I think, I think we said he defined a lot of things, but integrity and professionalism were the, were the two at the top of the list, and just of, of.
And actually, let me also add in that recently, he helped a senior who had fallen for one of those scams and sent money. And where people are like, ah, you're not going to get it back, you're not going to get it back. She actually got back the money because of his, his work.
Oh, his tenacity.
And his tenacity, yeah.
Yeah, he's good.
It comes from his grandmother. I met her. She lived in the village. What a wonderful person she was. And he was little when I met him. I'm so just, I'm so proud of him.
He's a really good guy.
Yep. We're going to miss him dearly.
Good luck, Brian, in the future.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Congratulations.
We are going to authorize the comptroller to pay Marcel Copeland the cash value of unused time as of his date of resignation. We're also going to authorize the comptroller to pay Kathleen Romanich the cash value of unused time as of her date of retirement.
That's sad.
We wish her the best.
Absolutely.
As well as her brother.
Good luck.
As well as her brother, right, Gordo?
Brother was Gordo. Her dad was Bill, who worked for the Water Department also.
Just wonderful people.
We'll authorize the comptroller to pay Karen Perez the cash value of unused time as of her date of retirement. We are going to authorize the comptroller process, the following budget transfer, which is $30,000 out of the Camp Temp help line to go to the pool maintenance line. And that's to remediate, that's going to deal with the remediation of the chlorine spill at the Slaven Pool Facility that occurred on Memorial Day weekend. Slaven Pool Facility that occurred on Memorial Day weekend. We're going to release a driveway permit escrow for 3515 Buckhorn Street. We're going to award the RFP for Lake Mohegan Green Infrastructure and Stormwater retrofit. My apologies, the text of the resolution's not there, so give me, was Dan here, or Ken? Do you have the, do you have the resolution? Could you just hand it to me, please? We're just... My apologies. We were, yeah, we were just waiting to see where it was coming from. Thank you. Let's see. So again, this is the $30,000 grant from the State of New York, DEC. It requires a 10% match, and this is for the Lake Mohegan Stormwater Phosphorus Reduction Planning and Design Work. This is part of the CFA from 2019, and it's being awarded to Weston and Sampson. And so, again, that, again, out of Weston and Sampson, and the money will be coming from, out of the MLID fund balance to cover that grant. We also have the resolution to approve the ELQ Industries Change Order Number Three, in the amount of $45,724. We have our engineer, Dan Crcia, here. This is in regards to the change orders of the filtration facility that Dan presented to the Town Board. That will be coming out of the Water Department fund balance, right, Dan? That was what we were waiting for, Pat? Yes?
Yes, thank you.
And that's $45,724.21. We will authorize the supervisor to execute a contract with Buckhurst Fish and Jackmart Inc. for the purpose of conducting a planning consulting services, perform environmental analyses pursuant to SECRA. This is for the overlay district, and we have Alice's. Pat, did you see my text message? Okay? Did you see my text message?
Do you want to do the old one?
No, did you see my text message for this one?
No. Is that one of the ones that you're on?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just wondering if we're going to do that old one transfer, or are we doing these pieces?
This one is different. This one's a separate, this one's for the, for the living history project that, that we're doing.
Yes.
Yes? Okay. And we also have here a resolution that authorizes supervisors to sign a proposal with MM Television and Video Productions to produce a video to memorialize the 20th anniversary of the 9/11 attacks for no more than $10,000. Be further resolved that Tom Sianjala is also approved to work on this production. And we will also include a transfer of $10,000 out of contingency to cover the cost. Yes? And with that...
Some moves.
Some moves.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motions carry. And with that, we will, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night, Yorktown. Thank you, all.
Go home and go to the beach.